The flag of the United States of America and the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have in our tonight's agenda our minutes from our March 26, 2018 open session meeting. We've all had the opportunity, I think, to review the minutes, and so I would hear a motion to accept them unless there's any edits that anyone would like to make.
Mr. Chair, I would like to motion that we accept the minutes from open session, March 26, 2018, as written.
Second.
Motion by the Selectmen in Ballin Court, second by the Selectmen in Keene. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is we have communications and announcements, and we have with us this evening Mass DOT, and I believe Kristen is here this evening, and actually we have a whole team from Mass DOT if they wouldn't mind actually approaching the table and present us with their update following, at this point it was December 19th.
Yes.
Our December 19th meeting.
Hello, I am Kristen Hayden. I am with CLB Fossett &amp; O'Neil, and I'm part of the design team for the intersection improvements at Chickering Road and Massachusetts Avenue. And this is Larry Cash, he is the Mass DOT project manager. We had a meeting on December 19th that was open to the public where we described the project, and we got a lot of feedback from the public with concerns. And the Select Board or Board of Selectmen also sent us an email with some of their concerns, more specifically from the meeting. And so we're here to give an update, just to let you know how we've decided to address those and how we've evaluated them. And we did send a letter, I don't know if it made it into your packets or not. So we're just going to kind of walk through the letter, and we put together a few slides with some plans of how we're planning on addressing different items. And if you have, and if you have any concerns as I'm talking, by all means, please feel free to interrupt me, so. Next slide. So the project area, the project is located at the intersection of Massachusetts Avenue and Chickering Road, I'm pretty sure everybody's pretty familiar with it at this point. The project limits have not changed, they have extended slightly to the north on Chickering Road to try to tie in with the school project that's being built for the elementary school because there is a new intersection that's going to be constructed at, I think it's around the Beacon Hill Boulevard area. So I think the product limits since we last met maybe extend about 100 feet. Next slide, please. Like I said, the last time we met was the public information meeting, which was December 2017. I did come before the board in January when we really hadn't had an opportunity to incorporate any of the concerns or changes or even evaluate anything because the holidays were in between the meeting and when we got to meet with you. Today, we've definitely progressed things forward, and we're moving toward the 100% design submittal on April 20th. The right-of-way has been pushed out a little bit, we are now anticipating that it won't be completed until the summer, late summer to fall of 2018, and we don't anticipate construction to begin until spring of 2019. So some of the concerns that were brought up at the meeting, and this is a very brief summary, but it's a broad summary of everything, was the school crossing at the Atkinson School. I know that this was a major concern. The right turn from Chickering Road northbound onto Massachusetts Avenue, a lot of folks were concerned that it wasn't going to be safe for pedestrians because it was a yield condition, there was concerns with the size of the vehicle that it was being designed for, so we did do some evaluations for that. Pedestrian safety in general, especially children utilizing the area and students because there was after-school programs that occurred, and not only just the crossing, but how they're going to utilize the intersection. And lastly, the speed on, of the traffic on Massachusetts Avenue was a major concern. So one of the, the board did write a number of questions to us regarding the Atkinson School crossing, and there was probably three or four different questions specifically relating to this crossing. So I'm just going to kind of walk through each one. The first one was, can we provide a raised crosswalk at this location? We did evaluate this option, and we decided that it was not the preferred alternative due to concerns with clearances on emergency vehicles and concerns for winter maintenance with plows and it getting ripped up every year and potentially having to replace it, especially since it's in the middle of a fairly busy roadway even when there's not traffic. It's not necessarily the most ideal area for a raised crosswalk.
What is a, like, what would a raised crosswalk?
It's like a speed table, so it's like a 10-foot wide, so it'd probably be like a six-inch raise, I don't know if it's quite six, maybe four.
Yeah, very trapezoidal.
Yes, it's very trapezoidal, but it's supposed to be gentle because it's 10 feet wide, so it's not like a speed bump as you go over, it's a speed table more is how they describe it.
There's one at the exit from the middle school down Parker Street. If you ever exit that way, there's a big line.
Okay.
And they do sometimes get damaged by plows, obviously, and if an emergency vehicle doesn't realize it's there and they're speeding down the road to get to an emergency, they could potentially bottom out. So it is, was determined that that was not the preferred alternative, and we should look into other options for the area. The next request was, I say it was pretty a large request, was to move the crosswalk down to the Beacon Hill intersection, and I did talk to you guys about that last time in January, and it's just not a feasible option because right now the sidewalk on Massachusetts Avenue between Phillips Common and Beacon Hill is about 700 feet, and it's three feet wide, and you can't have a three-foot wide sidewalk anymore, you have to have at least a five-foot wide sidewalk. You can have areas where it's four feet for a small distance, and it can go down to three feet for point, for certain points, so we would have to reconstruct the entire sidewalk for that 700 feet if we wanted to do that. That would also require construction of additional 500 feet of sidewalk down Beacon Hill, which is well outside the realm of this project unfortunately, it would dramatically change the project limits, and this is a safety improvement project for the intersection, not necessarily the school, so we wanted to make sure that we stayed focused on that. So we did receive some specific requests from the town, from the Board of Selectmen and different emergency personnel of what they would like to see for the crossing, and the number one request was to have a flashing light that turns red when it's activated by pedestrians. We did research this, and we looked at doing a hawk crossing in the location, which is the picture that's shown on the bottom left. The picture on the top right was what we had received from town staff of what they might like to see at this area because it is another location within North Andover, I believe it was.
That's St. Mike's.
Thank you. I wasn't really sure where it was located. So we did do some research, and according to MUTCD and Mass DOT standards, this type of signal that's a red signal is not recommended at intersections because it can be confusing for traffic that's on the side streets, and it requires that you have at least a 100-foot minimum spacing from that intersection.
So I have a question about that because I read that memo, and relatively recently in my lifetime that I vividly recall, we had Mass DOT install such a, you're showing us, for instance, St. Michael's, but we had a similar light installed right by Village Green across from, it's on 125, right by where there's a Richdale. It's not within the scope of this project, it's a little bit farther down if you were to be coming from 125.
Yep. That's signaling both intersections though, I believe, so it's not signaling the side street.
It's not at all. No, it's just, it is less than 100 feet away from the Village Green exit, but not at the Village Green exit, and so, I mean, it's...
Would you consider the Village Green exit to be a road or is it a driveway?
It's a public road to approximately 100 resident, 100 units, excuse me, maybe 100 units.
Village Green?
Between front and back?
More than 100 units.
Okay, that's at least 100 units.
But that is, that signal doesn't...
That's a, that's a pedestrian-activated signal where somebody has to press...
Right, this signal at St. Mike's is pedestrian-accented, but full cycle to red. Is that the signal the same?
Yes.
It's identical, they are identical, and that one, I mean, when I saw your memo, I was surprised because it just so happens that I used to live at Village Green, and that intersection is pretty commonly used for pedestrians, and it's something that clearly Mass DOT had approved, and it's right across, I mean, in this case, we're discussing this evening, a school crossing. In that case, I don't know why they, I mean, other than to help that small plaza right there, I mean, there's really not a reason for why that would need to be there, and yet Mass DOT approved that.
I mean, it's really, I know he feels it was used a lot, but in comparison to how that would be used on the Mass Ave, it's not.
But that's not what she's, she's talking about, the actual road layout. It's less than 100, I mean, the excuse they're giving for why they can't do it at this particular location is because of how close it is to Adams Ave, and that it's less than 100 feet away from Adams Ave.
Correct.
In the case of the same light on Route 125, not too far from this location, it is significantly less than 100 feet away from a similar roadway. In fact, it's the exact same setup.
I will say, I don't know what the standards were at the time when that light was installed, and this may be something that has come about since that was installed that was a safety concern, because I'm sure you can understand if someone pushes a pedestrian button and that red, a turn, a light turns red on Massachusetts Avenue, someone that's on, sitting on Adams Ave can easily think that traffic is stopping to let them out and go to turn and hit a pedestrian that's in the crosswalk if they're not paying attention, especially in an area that's so congested where they're just waiting for their break to be able to pull out of the side road sometimes.
So my question to that would be, because of where the side, the crosswalk right now leads off of a sidewalk on one side of Mass Ave to Atkinson, and it could be moved, like, if you're looking, if you're standing at that sidewalk, if you're standing at that crosswalk looking at Atkinson.
Yes.
At the entrance of Atkinson, the crosswalk connects to the right side of the driveway. If we moved the crosswalk a little bit farther down Mass Ave, not to align with any of the other roads, which you said are several hundred feet farther down.
Correct.
But rather if we moved it a few dozen feet so that it aligned with the left side of the main driveway of Atkinson, it wouldn't provide that same type of confusion for somebody leaving Adams Ave because they would only be encountering a problem if they were taking a left, and at that point they would have more than enough opportunity to see the stoplight.
Could you go to the next slide, because I think I have pictures of what the intersection looks like so we can look at it.
Just, just for sake of, not that the people brought up, the lower left, the hawk is similar to the Merrimack of 114.
Yes.
Sorry, go ahead.
So, I mean, it's the next slide after this, but what we have, are proposing to do at this intersection because of this concern is to put in a rapid, rectangular rapid flash and beacon, and last time I went with you, I told you that this wasn't allowed anymore, but they've, they've since re-approved it temporarily. There was a lawsuit against it at one point, but now due to infringement, I guess, a patent that they're not supposed to have.
Proprietary.
So at this point, it's been re-approved by MUTCD so we can use it again, and these are used throughout the state in many different areas and prove to be a huge improvement for the area and would be considered safe for the side street as well.
But this is just an alert, right? This is just, this is a stop.
Yes, the two, the lights, it's a yellow flashing light that goes back and forth when somebody pushes the button.
So if the crossguard, crossing guard was there, they might activate the light, gives them an additional signal to notify drivers that they're stopping traffic.
So how does this light resolve the problem, but the other light not?
The, the rectangle of flashes are, you can see them between the two yellow signs on the, and that's, so those will flash yellow back and forth, so it's, it's an extra caution, it's just, it's not going to be red.
Yeah, it's different when you're telling the traffic to stop versus saying caution, and, I mean, everybody's supposed to stop for someone in a crosswalk anyways, so it can be confusing for the side streets, but in general, MUTC does not recommend placing them within 100 feet of an intersection because it can cause more confusion because it is a red light, and it's not a fully actuated signal for everybody that's there, you know? If you're going to be putting in a red light, a lot of, in that instance, I would think you would recommend putting in a full signal if it's at an intersecting street.
See them a lot with rail trail crossings. I know like Route 62 in Danvers has it, it's very busy, works very well.
Emily, I will say it's not an ideal location or the best application for the area as far as that's concerned either, but I think Mass DOT is willing to allow it in this situation because the town does want to improve the safety so dramatically of the area. I don't think it's, it doesn't say one way or the other, you know, if you can use this type of signal or not, it's kind of gray.
So when you say it's not recommended, is that, does recommended mean that they won't do it, or it is recommended means it's not...
It's more, I would say it's more of a gray area.
We don't suggest that's a good idea, but if you want to do it, we can sue it.
I don't, I'm not saying I don't think it's a good idea, I just don't think that there's any thing saying you can't do it, but I mean, this, you brought up the same concerns, that if, you might have an issue with conflicting with side road traffic potentially.
But you did use the same language recommendation for the red light in the prior slide, and so is that also something that MUTCD and Mass Highway says we can't do, or it's just a gray area?
They're different type of signals too, like...
The other one's more, it's more overhead, so it involves more, more impact to, to the back of sidewalks and, and the right-of-way, so it's almost like, you know, would really be jumping back quite further in the design process, you know? So I don't, I don't, I think that this would be, I think it's going to give the same kind of effect with the crossguard there and, you know, keeping in mind the type of roadway that it is too.
I'm just, I'm just trying to understand though, for the other light signal?
Mass DOT has stated that they will not install that type of signal at an intersecting road in this location. That has been, decision that has been made.
Okay.
It's just, it's just not tied to the side street either.
So...
But they would approve something like this?
They would, and I, it might not, yes, the district has agreed that they would approve something like this.
The proposal here by design would be that there would be no signal. Hearing the community's concern, they're recommending a signal, although the original proposal and the warrants associated with this would have indicated no signal.
So your position is this is an upgrade?
It is, there are quite a few other safety improvements to the, to the actual crossing as well. You do have the speed radar feedback signs that are not in place today, so you have multiple safety systems that are going to be installed along this quarter that is, that aren't there today. The visibility of the crosswalk will be significantly higher than it is. We have moved, if you want to go on to the next slide, the layout of...
Can I, just about this crosswalk?
Sure.
What about pinching the road in a little bit where that crosswalk is?
Putting bump outs in?
I'm saying, one way to slow traffic, as I understand it, is when the road narrows, you'll slow down because your, your lane is smaller and you want to be more careful or whatever. So if you, if you just narrowed the road at the point of the crosswalk, and plus that means the sidewalk is coming out into the street a little bit more so that those signs with the flashing beacons are a little bit more in your eyesight than if they're here. If you've just pinched in the road a smidge, the sign placement is different from where it, it is everywhere else down the road, right? So you're noticing it more. I mean, I, I live on Mass Ave, I cross Mass Ave to go to friends' houses with my kids frequently, and I stand at crosswalks frequently, and people just don't, don't pay attention to the sign. Obviously here, I think they do it a little bit more, I'm talking about the one further down the road, and here's the school, maybe they're a little bit more conscious, but if the sign is just in towards the roadway a little bit more than all the other signs on the street, people would notice it more. Do, I mean, does that make sense? You guys get what I'm saying?
Yeah, I'm trying to say.
When road is pinched a little bit?
The engineering question is, so if you did what you did, if you replicated what exists just outside Town Hall, which is about a five-foot extension of the sidewalk.
Yes, it's pinched, exactly.
Connect sidewalks at either side, it's a crosswalk, connects the sidewalk, if you saw our front, sorry, I can't repeat.
Are they like little bump outs? Is that what you're saying?
Little bump outs. They're not very wide, they accommodate the handicap ramp and the, you know, if you saw it, it's fairly modest. The engineering question would be, to your second part of the question is, that in and of itself would be traffic coming, I'm not sure from an engineering perspective if you could then mount the signal on the bump out. I don't know where the engineering standards are on that, or whether or not you're going to take a structure and move it on to the bump out.
And I don't, I don't think you have the space to do a big enough bump out where you would be able to construct the signal because it's right at the end of the project limits. So we are winding up the road to have a five-foot shoulder for the portion of the road that we're improving, but this, the crosswalk is literally right at the end of the project limits. You can see the begin mill and overlay though up there, it says 268 plus 75, so I mean, the crosswalk's only 20 feet from that, so it truly is at the project limit, so I mean, it's, it's already a fairly narrow roadway today, it's not, doesn't have wide lanes, you can see that it has a pretty, it only has a two-foot shoulder, so for us to be able to pull it in, I mean, you might be able to get like a one-foot or two-foot bump out, and I don't think that would be enough space to be able to install the sign.
Do you have a bike lane proposed here too?
We do.
But you're going to be installing the sign anyways, I mean, in the, that's a proposal anyways that you'd be installing the sign.
Yes, but it's installed behind the sidewalk, not between the sidewalk.
In the road?
And the, yes.
So it'd be technically, so it would be technically installed in that person's yard, or it would appear to be their yard, but in the, in...
It will be right behind, yes, it will be right behind, I believe.
So that's almost, that means as people are waiting for the crosswalk, they're going to be standing between the road and the sign itself?
The sign is seven feet off of the road, so I mean, if you, yes, they'll be pushing the button behind them and they'll be waiting at the, the crossing.
That's what you always are doing.
Do that also?
No, not at all. No, you go down to the Mass Ave and, the Mass Ave and Waverly Road intersection, I mean, it's, you are standing with that pole, I mean, it's a light post that you press between you and the roadway. I mean, that's the case by the Village Green one. Maybe it's the case with the Village Green one, but it's definitely not the case with the other signalized buttons on.
Do they have a grass island between?
Nope.
Normally the...
Nope, the one, the one at, the one at Mass Ave and Waverly Road doesn't have a grass.
I mean, we just made the decision on Friday to do this, so I haven't had a chance laid out, I can look at the design and see if that's how it's normally installed. That's not how I envisioned it personally, but perhaps that if there is recommendation for how they're installed, and they're installed between the sidewalk and the road, then we could do that.
I mean, I feel like...
But I don't think we would construct a bump out, I think we would push the sidewalk back because you don't have room in that location to narrow up your road, because you only have a one-foot or two-foot shoulder existing today. So it's not like you have a five-foot shoulder where we can all of a sudden bump it out three or four feet and kind of make a nice, I know what you're at requesting, yeah. I just don't think you have that space at that location.
For those folks who probably don't recall this, I know that we've got some folks intimately involved in the project in terms of understanding it, for those folks who may not have seen the project, folks at home, currently the sidewalk is, is not perpendicular, it's connect, it's not really directly connected as it is proposed here. The sidewalk is coming down from Chickering Road all the way down on that side, there's currently no sidewalk on the side of the Atkinson School or from the, the church building, there's one proposed all the way down. Town has committed to continue that sidewalk into the school space so that people will be able to come really from the long side, the, the new kindergarten around that corner all the way down and into the Atkinson. It also will improve pedestrian safety because right now it's just a line on the parking lot, and kids walk on that line now, it'll be a raised sidewalk. So, so the connection between, you know, we often hear about sidewalk connections, the connection now between the sidewalk on the Adams Ave, Adams Ave side and the connection on the non-Adams Ave side will be clear and direct and marked, handicap accessible, the ability to go from one side to the next in a way where, quite frankly, today that's more than challenging.
And today, I mean, everything is asphalt, bit curb, you know, we're putting in vertical granite curb, which is a pretty major safety feature because we know that there was concerns of people driving up on that. I mean, so I mean, the area is going to be improved significantly, there is going to be a five-foot shoulder where today there's only a two-foot shoulder for, so pedestrians are just going to be even further away from traffic than, than they are today. So there's a number of improvements that are being, being made here, and I, we do understand the concern with this crossing, and we feel that the rapid flashing beacons will be a major improvement to the area.
I don't disagree that it would be an improvement, absolutely it would be an improvement.
Okay.
But I guess I'm, I would like to see...
You would like the hawk signal?
Yes, I think, I think that that would accomplish what I think a lot of the other concerns that have been brought up are with that intersection, and especially, and I mean, this doesn't necessarily impact your project, but I think we all anticipate that pedestrian activity at that crosswalk is only going to increase, given, you know, what we're discussing later in tonight's meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And again, it's not necessarily within the scope of this project, but it's just understanding the reality that if we, if we want to solve the problem at this particular crosswalk, let's solve it, let's not, let's not put something that turns out not to be, you know, the ideal long-term solution.
Because the board recommending a hawk signal, meaning at Merrimack, because the board raised some concerns about that type of signal when that first went in.
I think any overhead signal would be better than, than this, and only because if you're coming from, if you're coming from Lawrence, I mean, my idea, ideally, I think what's at, what's at St. Michael's if it was, if it would be possible, or what's at Village Green, but if you're coming...
St. Michael's.
Deep color signal.
Right.
Yeah, and that's, it's the same exact intersection of Village Green and, and St. Michael's, because if you're coming from Lawrence, driving down Mass Ave in the morning when there are students crossing that crosswalk, the sun aligns perfectly with Mass Ave anyways, and you can't, I mean, it's, it's almost like it was intentionally designed to just really mess with drivers, and I know that we, no one in this generation or anybody alive had a, had a say in that, but it aligns perfectly with right when school happens to be accepting pedestrians.
So, but just as a release, and maybe this is a summary point for later, but, but this group has 11 days to 100%, and so, and some of which you may be proposing, and I think it's all legit, right? But some of it, they may go back, and the warrants and any other things may prevent it from happening, and so I would suggest that you give them sort of Plan A and Plan B, because if Plan A is a signal that, that, you know, wherever the funding source says you can't do that there, you want to make sure, if you want change to this, I'd give them a few different options, because I think without that, it's going to be, I, I just, I'd suggest you give them a couple of different options just in case.
So if we say Plan A would be an activated or manually activated full stop signal like the one in front of St. Michael's, and Plan B would be the flashing yellow triangles, if that can happen.
Okay.
Is there, is there, so you've told us that they're not going, they've actually already said that they will not approve what has just been suggested as a Plan A, and most of the board has said it's a priority.
Correct. The other issue with it is if you have an overhead signal, it will require a full controller cabinet and all the different conduit that goes with it, and as you can see, it is right at the project limits, and it could also impact right-of-way a lot more significantly, and we're very far along in the process right now to, to be having this type of discussion. We were three months ago even, and we did originally come to the town with the project two years ago, and it was never brought up as a concern until this past fall, and unfortunately, it is very late in the game to be discussing right-of-way changes at that point in time. I know it's not an ideal situation, and it's not necessarily the controlling decision in this situation, but Mass DOT has, is not willing to install it here due to safety concerns and the fact that it doesn't meet regulations, but that is another factor, is the right-of-way factor.
Okay, so that's kind of different from not recommended, I mean, that's a stronger statement, and, and it's fine.
It is, it is, I mean, it's...
There's recommended and then there's won't do it, that's a different statement.
Yes, that is true.
Yeah, and, and you know, it's, it's so close to Adams Ave there that it, it would have to be, it would have to involve both streets, it's a fully actuated signal, that that's the reason why they want it further down the road away from, from, away from Adams Ave.
I mean, in the future, if the town wanted to look at shifting their crosswalk further down the road or going to the other intersection, like you guys have discussed, that's something you can definitely do as a town, but unfortunately, I just don't think that that's can be incorporated into this particular project at this time.
So you had suggested an idea of moving the crosswalk to the other side of the entrance so that it wouldn't be aligned with, with Adams. I think the challenge with doing that, just to wrap up the discussion on that suggestion, for me, the challenge with doing that is then every kid is crossing across the entrance of Atkinson, which is where every car that drives in is going, and so that is like, really not, not feasible. I mean, I, I've driven on rainy days or whatever, I've driven on days that were too late to walk, and that's just not, not realistic.
And there's also, that's where all the cars parallel park right there.
Yeah, like, I just don't see that as an option, even though I, I like the, the attempt, but I just don't see that that's feasible.
That's a practical view of it, yeah, that's a real-life view of it.
So I mean, yeah, I guess we could, as a, as a town, we could say later, we want to invest in putting sidewalks all the way down to Beacon Hill Boulevard and on Beacon Hill Boulevard and moving the crosswalk down there, and then kids cross over here into this playground area and come in. I mean, that's, that's a more reasonable suggestion, you know, answer, solution, I think, is to move the crosswalk down here and have a light, frankly, of some sort so that you can actually exit out of Beacon Hill.
I think that it aligns with, I guess that's a discussion for...
For another time?
Yeah. Anyways, so that, we've made it to go partway through your presentation.
That's okay. I'm sorry. No, it's worth it, fine, this is the...
That's a big discussion you're having, but when you have the big discussion, it doesn't change that this still would be here, and I, and I don't think it would alter what they would do, even if there was a proposal, go 700 feet down the road and quarter million to half a million worth of sidewalks and signalization down at Beacon Hill, but it wouldn't still change this, right? Because this is still where most or some of the pedestrian traffic would be, and, and there was pretty steady feedback from the people who participated in that meeting that some level of signalization sits in here, like one resident indicated that you've been Like one resident indicated that she's been asking for it for 20 years and, and so this may not be exactly what you envisioned, but it's a signal where there has never been one installed by the town or anybody else in the history of, the school's been here since the 60s, I think, or at least the land was taken in the 60s. So it wouldn't change what goes on downstream, but I think you'd have to leave here and not say that this is an improvement to what exists today. I think that sometimes gets lost in the conversation.
So the previous slide showed what the sidewalk was proposing at, if you want to go back one, sorry.
Nope. I don't know, that may be beyond my skill level here. I'm going forward.
Oh, dear.
Get with me. Told you, you're well beyond my skill level.
I think it's that top one. I think it's the top one.
This one here?
Nope, that one right there. Oh, nope, you were on it.
This is what we're going to do.
Start from the beginning? Nope.
Nah, we'll figure it out.
See the little arrows down the bottom? There you go. Keep going, one more. So one of the other, ooh, go forward, one. One of the other concerns was the style of the ADA ramps at the Phillips Brook entrance. And as you can see, this is what we had proposed at 75%. It's a little hard to tell, but the sidewalks were parallel, straight across Phillips Brook, it's on the top of the screen more, and the ADA ramp is kind of on the, in the corner there where the two crosswalks meet and it goes parallel. And if you go to the next screen, you could, we can show what we're proposing to do now. As you can see, we've wrapped the sidewalk around, so when the school comes through with their future project, they'll just have to remove that last little ADA, we had to do a tip-up, tip-down, so they'll have to remove the little ADA ramp tip-down and be able to tie into the sidewalk in the future. And we did not do that on the other side because it is our understanding that sidewalk is not proposed on that side of Phillips Brook, so. And this is also the style of the crosswalk that the town engineer had requested because it had been used in other locations in the town. It's more of a striped look, so it appears different than the other crosswalks. So hopefully we'll bring more attention to that crosswalk. And we opted to put it on the side streets as well because those are all kind of school crossings, right, in a very sensitive, a sensitive area. So the next thing that we, was talked about was the Chickering Road. If you're heading northbound on Chickering Road, taking a right onto Massachusetts Avenue, I believe Stephanie Seabide had brought up a lot of concerns with this corner. She was concerned about the size of the vehicle that was going to be used, that it was designed for, the fact that it was only a yield condition and that it wasn't a stop condition. So we did look into changing the design vehicle and we looked at what's called an SU40 vehicle, which is like a delivery truck, if you will, a smaller delivery truck. And we determined that it wasn't a feasible option. The first option was the one on the left and it's kind of hard to see turning movements and I'm not sure if the board's used to looking at turning movements all that much, but it would pull in the radius quite a bit, but it would have taken out the island that is there and that island provides, has a utility pole in it that we're proposing to maintain that has quite a significant number of utilities connected to it. It'd be very expensive to move. It also provides safety for pedestrians because it's kind of a rest area, if you will, or a safe island as they're crossing because it is such a long crossing for pedestrians to cross across Chickering Road because you do have two left turn lanes through and then a right slip ramp. So we decided not to remove the island due to those concerns. We also looked at just reducing the size of the island, which is the bottom corner. And again, this ended up having utility impacts, not only with the utility pole, but the way that the island ended up being pulled in, the radius, it would have interfered with the telephone duct bank that's there. So I, we just wanted to show that we did look at these alternatives, we did take it to heart and the evaluation was to leave it as it was originally designed due to those The other concern she brought up was the fact that it was a yield condition and she was concerned about safety for pedestrians. We have changed that to a stop sign. It is not signalized because none of the, the slip ramps were designed to be signalized to begin with. The other thing that we've gone ahead and done is for, if you're heading down Massachusetts Avenue eastbound, we've put up a no-turn-on-red blackout sign, it's called. So when the pedestrian, somebody pushes the pedestrian button and the pedestrian phase is activated, they'll get a, something that turns on that says no turn on red. And we did this because the right turn on Massachusetts Avenue is one of the major movements through the intersection and we didn't want it to interfere with children potentially crossing the street during school. We thought that would be another major safety improvement for the area.
So, sorry, where is that sign going to be? This no-turn-on-red? It's going to be for the Chickering Road people turning right?
It's actually on the masterarm pole. If you're, I don't have a picture of the intersection, unfortunately.
If you're at the 99 taking a right-
No, it's not the 99 taking the right, it's if you're going eastbound on Massachusetts Avenue. So if you go past the Atkinson School-
Okay.
And then you're going to take the right onto the road and 99, it's that right turn that we're saying no right turn on red. And it is, it is illegal to take a right turn on red during a pedestrian phase, people just sometimes don't remember that or, and so if you remind them-
So that's going to say no turn on red when the crossing people have a cross?
Correct.
Okay. And where is it going to be mounted? Sorry?
It's on the actual pole for, there's like a masterarm for the pole?
Right, I see.
It'll be on that pole.
Okay.
I think that's a good safety precaution because that is a tough one.
Yes. And you don't even, and people forget, they take the right turn on red without even, they might not notice the pedestrian thing is activated. And as, the picture on the right is actually on my drive to work and it is very effective for me personally, so that's why I was like, ooh, this might be a good application. So, yeah, it's definitely, I've never seen anybody drive through it when it says, when it's lit up, so. The other concern that was brought up was speeding on Massachusetts Avenue. We have decided to install a radar feedback sign if you're heading eastbound on Massachusetts Avenue as you're going into the more historic area or downtown, I don't know what you call it, village area, I believe you call it. So this way it'll, folks will have feedback that's 35 miles an hour, hey, you're going 50. Hopefully it will help control the speed a little bit more.
Flashing when somebody exceeds the supposed speed limit?
Yes, correct, correct. And the last improvement that we're proposing is storm resilience. So I know that the town has experienced a lot of power outages lately with some larger storms that have lasted multiple days, which has been very, wreaked havoc on a lot of, especially this intersection from what I understand. And so the state is going to be installing a battery backup system into the signal so it will still operate during outages, so.
That's good.
And I think that covers all of the concerns that you guys have brought up, so hopefully we've addressed them. I know you might not have gotten everything you'd hoped for, but-
You know, fun and pointed, but it almost seems like you do a roadmap just to understand all the signaling as you come in. It's a lot of stuff going on.
There, there is a lot of stuff in this little tiny project, I have to say, like for this, it's such a small area, there's a lot going on. There's, it's a very congested area, so.
I can tell you, in a living, just off 114 there, by Merrimack College with those changing people's habits, takes a little while.
It does.
But, you know, it's not perfect, but it definitely helps. And so, these are very significant changes and I've just seen just how that one crosswalk and getting, because so many people drive that over and over, it gets reinforced after a while, so I can appreciate the scale. It's intense, that one area, but I think everybody knows it's not right.
Mm-hmm.
And there's too much funneling into it. So I, I think there's a lot of warning here for folks and maybe the construction of this, what we're doing at the middle schools helps kind of alert people, things are happening along here, so maybe your timing's good with that, too.
Can I ask a question, or maybe something the board may be interested in? So if it were not for the sort of emergency vehicles and speed and the, where would a speed table be located on Mass Ave? I'm having trouble beyond the conversation of speed table. I'm having a difficult time of visualizing where there would be, given that there's Adams Ave, Phillips Brooks, you wouldn't want it directly across from the Phillips Brook entrance, that would be sort of awkward. Like where, where would that have likely begun and ended? I know it's a little speculative, but I'm trying to figure out, you wouldn't put it directly across from the end of Adams because then you're coming on it that way, right? Would you put it directly in front of Phillips Brooks? Where would have that, where would that have been?
So the speed table is about the same width as what the crosswalk is, so it would have been placed where the crosswalk is. So it's, it's on the radius of Adams Ave and it's on the radius of Phillips. I've never designed it to make sure it works because we've never gone down the road of that road, but I never, I've looked at the vertical elevations and everything to make sure it would-
Is it 10, 10 feet wide or is it the width of the crosswalk?
The crosswalk with the striping is eight feet wide, so I believe, isn't it? Or is it 10 feet? I have to go look. I said 10 feet wide, but I mean, maybe it is eight feet, but typically-
Because it really depends on the grade, right?
Speed tables, speed tables are essentially usually 10 feet wide. I don't know if a raised crosswalk typically is pulled in. In the situation where you have constraints, I would think you'd be able to pull it into eight feet without too much concern, but-
But the more you shrink it, the faster your pitch is different.
Yes.
Right?
Correct.
You've got to flatten it to make it less difficult for an emergency vehicle, the greater the pitch, right?
Yes, so you, it is, it does have a gentle pitch, you are correct.
So eight feet does more like a speed bump, ten, not more like, but as you flatten it out, you can make it, as you elongate it, you flatten it out. It just becomes sort of an interesting spot because if it, if you want to avoid the sort of likely bottoming out of certain vehicles, it need to be wider.
You'd have to have a more gentle slope, yes.
And as you make it wider, then halfway across the front entrance of Phillips Brooks-
It would start to have a raise, yeah.
Or halfway across the entrance of Adams Ave, that, that's why I was struggling with mentally, it either need to be a very limited one, which gives you more of the risk for bottoming out, plows bottoming out, or more gentle, and so serve the point, in which case it's halfway across the driveway entrance, which I think is, is more than challenging to have a car sort of partly go up on that's-
I think we had talked about moving it to the other side of Adams Ave in that situation, if it was a speed table potentially.
Closer to Chickering?
Yes.
Closer to Chickering.
So that you would have, it would be at that crossing location instead.
Got it, okay.
I think it's like eight to 10 on top and then you decide how, how much you're going to make the diagonal from your existing grade up to the top.
It's pretty significant though, once it's constructed. I think it's almost like 20 feet on either side to do the gentle, yes.
It's pretty wide, I would imagine.
So.
Okay, it's just I was having trouble visualizing it. So it would have, you would have contemplated on Adams Ave closer to Chickering?
That's where I pictured it, but I don't know if, like I said, I never did lay it out and design it, so.
Regarding the sign that gives you the speed feedback?
Yes.
What was the decision, or why, why was there a decision to put it between Chickering and the old center versus Chickering and closer to 495?
So headed the other direction?
Well, still headed east, but on this side of Chickering rather than that side.
Coming into the school zone as opposed to after the speed-
Right, because I feel like, personally, that's, that's where I feel like there's more speeding now.
So as you're coming up to the light?
As you're coming up to the light versus-
I mean, you're within a school zone in that situation, so you already have one flashing sign that flashes at 20 when you're in a school zone, so.
I think that's what's being missed. Is there, there's, is there a sign in the project already?
Yes, there's already radar feedback signs in the project for the school zone itself.
Yes.
So this is an additional one that's for the, to continue past it.
Right, I forgot that.
Yes, people were concerned that once they get out of the school zone, then they might start speeding again. So this is a little reminder of what the speed limit is. Now that it's not 20, it is still 35, so hopefully it will alert them to maintain their speed.
So there are already two proposed within the school zone here.
And the other way, going towards 495, because also in the morning, and maybe this is not, in the morning, going towards 495, as you can imagine, that's where the flow of traffic is and the cars just absolutely, as soon as they get past the Atkinson, because they've been sitting behind cars trying to turn into Atkinson, so as soon as they get behind that, they like floor it and go down Mass Ave. So then when you're trying to get out of, after dropping your kid off, forget about it because the cars are just flying down, so you can't turn right and then the traffic backs up into, in Atkinson, you know, so.
It feels like a slight decline.
It's definitely declined, definitely.
And then you're now over where the Thompson School kids are all.
But, but I think we have, just to separate from these folks for a sec-
Yeah, I was going to say-
We're going to ask the chief to come in on the 30th and talk about a number of different, you know, some information he's been collecting for quite a period of time. I mean, speed as it relates outside of these project limits, that's on us as it relates to speed limits, what we're finding for data, speed controls, enforcement. It is fair that I think once they leave, it's, it all sort of looks like you're-
It's like, yay, we're past that.
Ready to go.
Let's go.
And so certainly, the perception is there and the layout is there, but I think that's more about having conversations with the chief about, I do know they commit a fair amount of resources to enforcement down there, but I think also that he'll have some traffic data that'll tell us counts and the kind of speeds and things like that that may help the board make some decisions in that stretch heading toward 495. And it's clearly outside of these sort of project limits.
Right, okay.
Any questions or words?
Someone has been making a comment. I don't know what you can say.
Which is quite common. I think at this point we'll wait till public comment for, for this because we've had many conversations back and forth with this particular party and I'd like to get to the planning board, the CPC, and then we have a citizen petition to discuss this, so.
So you'd like us to stick around, is that what you're saying?
I mean, I guess that, I mean, you basically answered all of, I mean, we've, we've taken feedback, we've given you our feedback, we've taken more feedback, we've given you our feedback. I mean, I, there are more pieces that I would like to be addressed, but unfortunately, you're saying that you can't, so. Thank you.
Thank you guys, we appreciate working together with you.
It'd be good for them to stick around with this petition in case we have questions around-
Do we want to ask them? Would it be, would you care to wait another 20 minutes, actually? Yes, at least for that, for follow-up questions because we are reviewing an actual-
Sure, we can wait 20 minutes, I just don't know how long the meeting typically went.
I don't think you need to wait till the end. I think that we can ask questions when we get to the citizen petition portion.
Sure.
Thank you.
So the next item on the agenda is we have the citizen petition coming up, so we have Article 10, Traffic Calming Measures, which is a citizen petition filed by Karen Loro. I reverse the planning board, CPC, so we can actually, we don't even have to wait 20 minutes, so. Karen?
Hi, I'm Karen Loro at 595 Mass Ave. And we submitted a, a traffic calming petition at, right at the crosswalk, so it feeds right into this. It doesn't sound like the selectmen were happy with, and I, this allows me to address some questions, some, some comments that I had during this earlier discussion. So this article requests comparable traffic calming measures to be added to the Mass Ave Adams Street school crossing zone for everyone removed at the Mass dot highway reconstruction of that project, which was promised December 19th, 2017. It does turn out that although they're getting close to finalizing, the issues have been consistently brought up for 18 months. We have over 100 pages of, of officially documented citizen concerns on this project and have met a number of times. So, you know, I've been promised stuff over and over and over again and never saw it, so that's why I ended up having to go with this article. And what the specific items that it's requesting is to extend the current Mass Ave, Massachusetts Avenue Adams School Zone to the Massachusetts Avenue Chickering intersection. So go, bring the whole thing to that, especially as the crosswalk, as the school crosswalk becomes more dangerous and there's a sidewalk that goes to the light, the intersection at Mass Ave and Chickering, more kids will go, will choose not to use the crosswalk. We're, we're going to have athletic fields there, you're going to have kids crossing during longer periods. Fewer children will be just crossing when the crossing guard is there. So, you know, we see kids, I'm right there, I see kids crossing all the time as it is right now. So it will get worse with the athletic fields and more kids will be crossing at the lights and that's a concern. I'm hoping they're going to put the no-turn-on-red on the opposite side, adjacent to the church because you've got that turn lane and it, it's got an island so that the light, unless they're changing it, when I walked it a couple months ago, between, that first lane, turn lane, between the church and the main crossing doesn't have any light control. The light control is from the island to the opposite side, because I don't have a map, I'm waving my hand a lot. So it would be good to repeat the no-turn-on-red sign and the stop sign on the turn lane that goes from Chickering onto Mass Ave so that the two island setups are similar.
So that's not though included in this article?
No, it's not, it's not.
Let's, for the-
No, 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 that's ju-
Let me clear what the-
That's justification for extending the school zone all the way to the lights because effectively that's what's going to happen. because effectively that's what's going to happen. You're now gonna have a dangerous school crossing, you're gonna have sidewalks, so a number of kids will choose to go up to the lights as opposed to going across a dangerous school crossing. Okay, so that was number one. Selectmen approve raised and marked school and pedestrian crosswalk installed by Mass dot. We've discussed this, and one of the issues that has been brought up is the emergency vehicles. Well, all the North Andover emergency vehicles would know the existence of that raised crosswalk. And so if you're an outside one that doesn't travel down the road frequently, you would be more cautious in your driving. And, you know, there was some concerns that might slightly slow down the speed of the emergency vehicle, but you're blocking the top of Autran, and it was said, the minutes that would increase emergency vehicles to my house, okay? So now they have to go through Adams, across the little side street and all the way back up. They said that that was not an issue. So you're increasing, by putting the right turn only blockage at Autran, you're increasing the time of emergency vehicles in our neighborhood. So in terms of minutes, the little bump, the raised crosswalk, only increases in the order of roughly 20 seconds. So, you know, if it's okay in one case for a much longer period, or order of magnitude, longer period of time, it should be okay for it as the raised crosswalk, because our solutions right now are relatively poor. And we're increasing the danger by removing traffic calming. So the third one is install a stop sign or stoplight at, on Massachusetts Avenue near the school crosswalk. That's been discussed here also. So we're reinforcing the same things that we need to extend the school zone, we need to have the raised walk. The only thing about the raised walk is potentially it could incur a little more cost in snow removal. But I think the truck drivers can learn to lift the blade and go over it. I think the safety of our children are well worth that cost incurred. So, and install the stoplight or stop sign, that's been discussed, and it seems like the board is open to that. But there isn't agreement between Mass dot and, and the board. So those are the articles, and I don't think I need to really get into the background stuff. I mean, it's known that this is a safety project, but most of the emphasis is on increased capacity. So we're actually increasing the injury, the risk for injury and death in this area by removing the traffic calming. So we need to do something here. And the analysis that the, this project is federally funded through the HI, HSIP, Highway Safety, whatever, ever. And the manual clearly states the type of analysis they expect to happen, and that didn't happen. And in the November 15th meeting that the town and Mass dot had, they, it was agreed upon, you guaranteed that I would get a chance to review the modeling, the safety modeling, because I knew immediately that what was being proposed increased the chance, the risk of injury and death. And so I wanted to see realistic modeling that, you know, that this project wasn't going to increase the risk. And so that's why we're going for the most conservative traffic calmings right around the school crossing, because the analysis that was supposed to be done never was done. So if we're gonna step back and go to more risky, you know, less solid approaches, then it's gotta be backed up with rigorous injury and death analysis.
Any questions for Ms. Loro?
I think I've taken much of my five minutes.
It is the only citizen petition, unless I'm.
Pardon me?
It is the only citizen petition on the agenda, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any final questions? Nope. Okay.
Can I just ask one question of the traffic folks, I missed one. Just ask if the school zone speed limit signs will list the hours that they're in operation? Is that a requirement under the speed on the signs themselves? Page 57, no, whatever page it is.
Can you also remind us exactly where the speed school zone is currently in the plan?
The school zone is right after you go through the intersection, if you're heading westbound on your right side where it starts, and it's.
Like at the point where that right turn comes if you're headed, I don't know which is north and south.
Yeah, I'm bad on directions, so I'm with you.
Can we pull the diagram back up and just kind of point out where the school zone is in the.
Well, I don't think I have the full scope of the school, because the school zone will begin, I'm not good in direction either, but closer to 495 than in that map I have.
Right, but I'm towards the Chicaring side.
Let me see if I can.
The second slide offers the fullest view.
So the school zone starts right after the church entrance.
Right after the church entrance.
Right after the church entrance.
Okay.
And then on the other side is across from Bay State Road.
Okay, so what would be.
Burnout, I guess, firstly.
What would be the issues or ramifications of extending that Chicaring?
The school zone is maximized.
It's maximized?
For what? That HCCD allows. It's maximized. And we had a full study about a year, year and a half ago, we sent to the engineering department, and we also sent it to town, showed that we had maximized what HCCD allows in this region.
Can we get two school crossings, one at the light and one at Adams?
What determines the size of the school zone is the location of the building, the relationship to the road. So we maximize from one corner of the building as far as we can. The amount of the building that's on Mass Ave is actually very small compared to, you know, the general road, if you will. So we maximize, I believe this, I don't remember if it is, I have to go back and look at the regulation, but we maximize from one corner of the building over, and where the property line maybe is. It's one of the others.
Can I ask a point of information, so we were told that there's, we're 11 days away from 100% design?
Correct.
And that's an immovable date?
No.
I'm asking the designer.
Yeah.
Karen, I'm asking the designer.
Okay.
Karen, I'm asking the designer. Now, is that an immovable date?
I mean, it's, we've already moved it, it's supposed to be in February.
February, right, beginning of February. So we pushed it out significantly to try to make sure that we're incorporating all the concerns.
I mean, we're still trying to meet the 2018 tip, which means advertising for in the middle of September. So we're still trying to meet that. So we really need to.
I guess I'm just trying to understand only because 11 days from now is quite a few days, quite a few weeks before our town meeting when this would be discussed, just tying it into the prior discussion about the citizen's petition.
What is the statute?
Not in 11 days.
May 15th or something.
So, just a map you look for to conserve.
Yeah, just to understand where the school zone is currently, but I've heard the response, it's already maxed out, and you confirmed that today as well. So that's consistent.
So the board knows, I think we asked that question in a meeting two years ago.
Yeah.
Can the school zone be expanded? I think it was one of the very first questions we asked. Can the school zone be expanded? The school zone has been reached to its fullest limits under any reasonable regulation.
But there's a difference on whether or not the school zone is just for Atkinson or it feeds the middle school, the early childhood area. I mean, kids that are crossing, four-year-olds are crossing in the middle of the summer using that crosswalk.
So, and we know, we are all familiar with the crosswalk, so.
The school zone actually.
Karen, the calendar. Karen, this, we've gotten our answer, which said that legally we can only apply the school zone to a certain window right there.
I think, I think, if I could just interject, it seems to me that what you relayed to us tonight are really the end lines of what's possible. Talk about, we can't do tables, here's why. Here are the turns, here's why. There's a lot of components in this that come from the research. And what I get from this presentation is, you've gone through and you've weighed this, and you've said, here's the choices we have, because this is what's fundable. And, you know, one of the practicalities that we have to deal with is, it'd be wonderful to have bridges going over this sort of thing, and tunnels going underneath, and all these things that would be wonderful, and we know would create a lot more safety. But the practicality is, as a community, we can't afford what it costs to fund that ourselves. So the reality is that we have to partner with the state, and by doing that, we give up a large amount of the control, but you're partners in consultation as to how it comes together. So what I hear from you tonight is, basically, we're maximizing it as much as we can within your community. We're stretching it, we're trying to fit these sort of things, but this is realistically what can get funded. And at the end of the day, that's, that's what I get from, I don't know.
I have to counter that, because I don't want anyone listening to this meeting thinking, oh, they're, they're not gonna go for the safest thing because we don't have the money for it. No, we're, we are listening to the recommendations of Mass DOT who have regulations who've said, it is not safe to do X. You should not put a light here because someone will be turning right into it, and that's not safe, they will hit a person. It's the safety reason that you're giving that what we wanted, which is a pedestrian activated light, is not good there. Not because it's too much money. I would be willing to discuss, let's spend more money on this project if we're gonna save people's lives. I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying that we don't have money to make this as safe as possible. I mean, I get, I get your point, we're considering the cost, but that's not what's driving this decision. What's driving this decision is, my kids go to school here, my kids walk here, your kids walk here, what is gonna be safe for them? But also keeping in mind, there's cars driving through the intersection, and what's gonna be safe for the cars, and not having cars get in accidents. And I can completely see, now that you guys have raised it, that if someone's turning out of Adams Ave, left onto Mass Ave, and there's a red light there, they're not gonna see that red light, and a kid's gonna be walking through that crosswalk. So I understand that. I just wanna make sure that we have thought of and analyzed every possible solution, and if everyone that we've thought of is not reasonable because it creates another safety issue, then, then great, then we have what we can do. So for me, it's not, it's not really about finance, financials and discussing whether or not we can fund it.
So we've allowed, we've allowed to, we've allowed two conversations to merge, we've now gone back on the agenda, and so.
Sorry.
To discuss effectively, so I guess, I would, I would say, are there questions outstanding for Mass DOT that we want to invite Mass DOT back up to the table, or?
I have a question. Is there any scenario where almost all of what we've got going on that's up and going, it's just so much going on that that concerns me. It's like, where do my eyes go next? That really worries me, that, are there any examples that you could tell us about where all of these safety measures, and I, I agree with Regina and everybody here that it isn't money, it's what's the safest, but do you understand, do you understand my question?
Do you understand that we're compressing too many safety things into one small area?
Right, to the point where nobody knows where to look.
Sensory overload.
Exactly, sensory overload.
So I think when you have the flashing light, unless you know the speed limit, and then you have a crosswalk sign in front of you that's a flashing yellow beacon, I don't think that that's going to be a sensory overload. I will personally admit, we have, in my town, we did install a hawk signal, and when you're driving down a busy road and you're visually looking for pedestrians and everything else in front of you, having a hawk signal or a signal above you sometimes is not where you're visually looking, when you do have so many things going on. And I personally have run through a hawk signal because, or the red light, and not even realized it was going, because I was looking at pedestrians, and there was nobody in.
Exactly, and trying to read the signs.
But I feel like the more you're trying to take somebody's eyes from this sign up to that sign, you know what I mean? Like, when they're driving, if it's through an intersection, they're stopped a lot of times when they're looking at those signs. It's a little bit of a different situation. I'm saying this from my personal experiences, this is not engineering, you know, this is engineering judgment from my part personally, it's not anything that's in regulations. You do wanna be careful about how many rapid tow signs you do put in a certain distance, though, and we have not exceeded that in this situation.
I think the hawk, we all have the feedback that the hawk signal creates its own level of confusion, and has continued to do so. It's gotten better, learning, but it's created some confusion. I'm not sure that pedestrian activated signals have the same, it doesn't require so much to process, takes a little bit to process the hawk signal. What's the flashing yellow, what's the red?
A friendly reminder that, oh my gosh, there's somebody in this, this is what I'm supposed to be looking for, it's normally.
No, I'm talking about the hawk. The hawk signal goes through three phases, and it confuses people somewhere around the third phase and.
I think the rectangle of rapid flashing yellow, it works very effectively, and I think it's actually, as Kristen said, it can be more visible, because it's down along the sides, and it's going on both sides, no matter which direction, you're gonna see it on both sides. So it's, I just, I think it's gonna work very effectively in this case.
But again, is there any example? I mean, where you live, I don't know where you live.
No, yeah, sorry.
There's one, in fact, the individual who recommended that signal was the police chief, and he used an example that's on, by my recollection, I believe, it's, it's a different setting, but it's, that same signal can be found, I think it's on Merrimack Street in Lawrence.
So he recommended the flashing yellow?
He was one, there was a series of different lights, you know, everything from full signalization. He had passed along that example as one that he thought had been effective in driving in this area, but was not in a school zone, so I don't wanna make the connection.
It does seem to make sense, though, but, so, well, you, it sounds as though you've got the gist of my question, so you're, you're okay with sensory overload or lack thereof?
I don't think you're getting the sensory overload. I don't think there's enough signing in the area that's going to cause that. We do have, there is a minimum spacing required for some of this stuff, we are meeting that minimum spacing, so I'm not overly concerned in this situation.
It's, it's a difficult situation, period.
It is, it's a very tricky area.
Kristen and I have been on the project for a while, and, you know, it's not a corridor project. I mean, we've tried to incorporate as much as we can going out, and we've extended the limits. We've gone back, have added design fee, you know, we've done, you know, I think, given the scope of the project and what's programmed, project review committee approvals, all of that, to a point, like, you can only do so much, you know, move forward with the intersection project. And I remember being way back early on at that 25% review, where we talked about extending down to the school area. I mean, we were never down this far up down Mass Ave, so, you know, we've really, I think we're, we're trying to do the best that we can, and I think that there's no doubt that we're gonna see significant improvement. I mean, just the signal systems alone are far superior to what you have out there. I mean, I see these existing photos and just the overhanging, the trees and everything, it's just, it's gonna be significantly better, the visibility, everything, just, just the outline of the, of the signal systems, the lighting that's used, everything is, it's just far superior to what we have out there now. And I think that, you know, you've had problems with battery backup, there's no battery backup.
Yep.
Power goes out, you're gonna have those improvements, and the left turn lanes are gonna immensely improve the safety in that area.
So I think based on this discussion, I'm happy with the yellow beacons.
Yeah, I think those sound like probably the best thing we've got. That and the battery backup are like the two best things we've got going here.
So, Mass DOT has given their direction. We have wrapped up the citizen petition discussion. Unless there are any final questions for the petitioner? Hearing none, I would invite the chairman of the Community Preservation Committee, Mr. Simons, who's patiently been waiting to approach and give his recommendations and an overview of what's being presented in Article 12 of our annual town meeting.
Good evening, everyone. John Simons, Chair of the Community Preservation. It felt like it was just a planning board meeting.
I was thinking that, George, you were paying a lot of attention. I could see that planning board going through your.
Yeah, exactly. So, I'm here to talk about the Community Preservation Committee articles this year, and I would say with one exception, the, most of the appropriations are pretty simple, pretty straightforward. I'll try to take them in order, and then at the end, spend most of the time on the large one. one, which I think everyone already knows about, is, first of all, I'd like to talk about the Housing Authority. As you may know, over the last five or six years, we've funded quite a few Housing Authority projects, starting with repair and restoration of some of the roofs of the projects. And, and we've found that it's an excellent partnership and that a lot of the projects we've done have had really a very profound and significant effect on the quality of life of the people living in the projects and we're absolutely delighted by that. This year, the Housing Authority came in with a number of large projects and we looked at the full list and we funded the two most urgent projects on the list, which is some emergency generators for some of the facilities, in particular this year, everybody knows the need for them, so that the people living in them could have some space to go in a common area to get light and heat in the cases of power outages. So we felt that that was a good expenditure. And there was also an urgent need to improve the parking lot at Bingham Way. Beyond that, there were a couple of proposals, most particularly for some work in the interior of some of the projects and also in several cases, some exterior work. And what we thought made more sense, and this is something that we've done in the past with other areas, is to fund the study, in this case with $75,000, to do a bottoms-up needs assessment of the future needs and requirements. So if you remember, the CPC did this in the past with Stevens Estate, we did it with the playgrounds, we did it with the historical society. I think every case that we've done it, we're very pleased with the outcome because then we know when we see a project coming forward, that's the most important, significant one, and we don't get into problems and issues about, well, this should be the priority versus that, it's based on professional judgment. So that's the approach we're taking this year and then once we get the study back in future years, we'll fund additional projects. But I think that, that approach, I think, makes a lot of sense. I'll stop for a quick second and see if anybody has any questions on, on that.
Which are the units that, we have several neighborhoods, right, for, that have common areas, but we're not funding generators at all of the common areas?
Uh, no, not in all of them. I, I forget off the top of my head, can get you which properties, I just, I just-
It's three of the six and the three, three of the six cannot because of the nature of what powers those community rooms.
Okay.
The nature of the fuel that's used to power those, if you have gas, then the generator doesn't work, but if you had fossil fuel, it does. So there are three community rooms of the six that will be, will have generators.
So they does not need them because they-
No, the nature of the fuel as a generator doesn't work as the alternative power supply. So our facility person along with the, the housing authority's engineer and electrician went out and, and looked at these community rooms and came to the conclusion that three, I'm sure not articulating well what Steve Foster would say, but only three of the six could end up with generators to, to power again these community rooms and three of the six could not. And that's why the recommendation was for three of the six.
Would, just-
It relates to the fuel use, the system, both the electricals-
They don't have power coming off the street or they're-
Well, it's-
Off the grid?
Well, the power comes from, still, you need to have, if you're going to put a generator somewhere, what's the generator going to be powered by?
The fuel for the generator.
Correct, yeah. And so the nature of the fuel, the generator, how do you, the size of the panel, how that it all work. Again, I, I know I'm not doing a very articulate job of explaining it, but with Steve Foster's involvement, because we wanted the town's involvement, we happen to share the same electrical company by contract as a housing authority, and the agreement was these three could have them and three could not.
So which, I know one's Bingham Way- Yeah, I was going to say, the only one that I knew off the top of my head was Bingham Way.
But there's plenty of folks that have generators that don't have any kind of fossil fuel to the house, they use other external methods.
I'm, I'm just relating the story as I was explaining to me as best I can.
I know, I understand that, I just don't think it's, I, I can't imagine it's impossible.
I mean, one of the things that will come out of the study, too, is that we may say we can do that for all the properties. We did have a very robust discussion about, you know, would you consider extending generators to something broader than that, but then the scale of expenditure for it, you know, rose. If, if you wanted to keep the power on in every single unit, the cost would be prohibitive.
That makes more sense.
And that's why we wanted to be careful. So I think that we could always come back at some time in the future when we've evaluated the study bottoms up and do something similar for the other properties as well. But I think this, this is solving a very real need and as the town manager said, we can do it right away with relatively little cost.
Oh, this is great. I mean, obviously this year, we've, we've seen a need for that in more than one situation. So I think this is great that we're doing this.
So the, the next project on our list in, it's still in the area of affordable housing is $100,000 contribution to Affordable Housing Trust, which is something that we've done for a number of years. We're pleased with the approach and the model that we've taken there. I mean, the, the problem with purchasing property affordably is that you can't always pick the time and it doesn't always match up with the town meeting cycle. So making a contribution to Affordable Housing Trust gives them some flexibility to go in and partner up with Red and Roses, has been practiced in the past, and potentially purchase property. One of the things that we ask is that we meet every year with Affordable Housing Trust to go over what they've done, what they've learned. I mean, I think they've learned an awful lot about the economics of it and how you do these projects and how much they cost and so forth. And I think the other thing that to me is a very significant thing is by picking the properties they do, they have potentially stabilized neighborhoods in a way that you wouldn't normally think of it, but typically it prevents a property from being run down, which has a huge value in addition to just the, having affordable housing unit for one person. So, I, I think this is a good area. You know, we always, I think we need to learn more as a community in general about affordable housing and this gives us a way to do it and, you know, a way to potentially leverage it in the future, so.
John, could I, um, could I just ask, just going back to the one right before, Affordable Housing Trust, for Bingham Way, is that just repaving of the parking lot or is there any type of, like, I know the sidewalks over there, those residential-
The sidewalks, too, yeah. It's basically everything out there.
The concrete sidewalks are going to be-
Yeah, it's the sidewalks and the parking, yeah, yeah. So, maybe we'll, we could add, we can subtly change the description.
All the asphalt.
Yeah, all, all the asphalt. And we've done it in the past for a couple of cases where we've improved the, you know, pavement as well as the parking. We usually do both as part of the same project, so. The, the next item on our list is the playground renovation program. This year, we've gone through a regular cycle each year. This year, we're doing two, not one, because we feel it makes sense, particularly part of the other larger projects. So Atkinson and Carl Thomas are two on the list, that's the next in order priority. What this will do is it'll hasten by a few years the completion of the entire program, you know, if we continue to do it a year, but we could go back to one if, if we needed to. So. The next item is, is a project where we're partnering with the trustees of reservations to put a parking lot in for Ware Hill, and very similar to what exists at the Stevens Coolidge property, so it's not meant to be paved, it's meant to be just something that would be dirt and gravel and, you know. And it would be over on Pleasant Street. If you notice the area, if you've ever driven by there, it's actually a bit of a safety hazard because people park right on the street there and there's quite a few people and there's a lot of kids running around. And it'll be for about 15, 20 cars and it'll pull in right off of there and we'll get the cars off the street. The trustees, if you may remember, have done a number of projects in conjunction with this, with woodwalks and trails. And what their model is, they provide all the design and the engineering and some, all the sweat equity and the town buys the materials for the property. So it ends up being a lot less than it would normally cost for something like this.
So I'm still trying to figure out where that is. So if I'm going down Pleasant Street, there's a parking lot now that's on the left-hand side after you go by Stevens-
You gotta go almost, it's almost to, when, when you get out to Osborne Street.
Yeah, the side.
So it's beyond the power grid, beyond the substation?
It's this way up here?
Yeah.
Thank you. This is Pleasant Street still, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, think of it coming the other way, Dick, is if you're coming on Osborne and you don't turn into the high school.
Okay.
You keep one going a little bit and then you take the first right-hand turn.
I see.
It's, it's, well, that section. It's between that and Mill Pond, no.
Yeah.
Just after Mill Pond.
Yeah.
Moving away from Stevie's.
Going toward Mill Pond is if you're going to the fire station, on your right.
Okay, I'm going to have to look at that because isn't that Stevens Street or is that?
Stevens Street.
Is it Stevens, I'm sorry then.
You're saying Pleasant Street, and that's why I'm not Stevens Street.
I'm messing you up here, yeah.
It's Stevens Street on the right heading for the fire.
Sorry about that, yeah, it's not Pleasant Street, Stevens, yeah.
Okay.
I'm fine with that, I didn't know.
It's here, it's here, I was trying to get it on the spot, it's up here.
Yeah.
On Stevens Street.
That's actually where I would be.
Right.
I wasn't, I was confused with Pleasant Street because there's already a parking lot along Pleasant Street.
Let me jump ahead, you see there's a line item reserved for historical expenditures. We did not fund any direct historical preservation projects this year, but under the law, we're required to reserve 10% of our funding for each of the three areas, historical preservation, affordable housing and open space and recreation. So that is, you know, roughly, we were going to take in about $2 million next year and that's 10% of that. So I did want to mention that there was one project that was proposed that we turned down. It was for some work at St. Paul's Church and the primary reason why we did it is because the recent state's precourt decision related to funding, CPC funding of churches. It was, we talked to town council, we talked to the state community preservation coalition, we read the, the decision numerous times and felt that it was premature to, in this current environment, to approve a project like that. It's better, we feel it's better to wait another year or two till it shakes itself out. The, the specific case from Acton is actually going back into the trial court again and I think when that happens, we'll have a better idea of what you're allowed to fund and what you're not to. They, the, the Supreme Court decision applied like a very complex three-part test that nobody really quite understands today, so we felt that we would be better off waiting a year. I did talk to the applicant, I said, I thought you had a very nice project, but we just feel there's too much uncertainty right now and they understood, so that's, I just wanted to mention that. The last project and obviously the most significant one and one is the $6 million for the Fields and Recreation Complex, that's the official name we're using for this. And I think everybody is familiar with the project. I think everybody believes it's just extraordinary project, transformative to the town, will make a huge difference in the quality of life in the community. And this is one frankly where the CPC has been asked to do a heavy lift. We had a very robust discussion, as I said, the town manager one evening and Regina, you were there, so you know, we talked about it at length and then I think in the end agreed that we would be willing of the approximately $9 million cost of the project to fund $6 million of it under CPA. We obviously have to, there's certain things that we have to follow. We have to follow the CPA rules, like we can't fund artificial turf and a few other things, so we just need to make sure that we have $6 million of fundable things in the project. And there's a few other things. We, one of the things that has to occur as part of the process is that the, the land becomes transferred to the, from the school committee to the town itself. We would also like to see some sort of soft restriction on the future use of it because, believe it or not, there's a couple of towns in the Commonwealth that funded recreational complexes and then took the land and built schools on them. And, you know, if we're going to spend all this money for this, I think it would be right not to, to know for a period of time that we're going to kick the space open for that public purpose, so that's one of the things we would want. Now, one of the questions that comes up with this is, is there available money for this? And one of the things that we've always done with CPA is try not to spend all the money that came into the fund each year. And the primary reason for that is that when you purchase open space, you don't know when it's going to come, you don't, would it be in a situation where you borrow money out for five, 10 years? We would rather have most of the money, if not all the money, available for major significant projects in reserve. So we've built up, you know, a reasonably hefty reserve in the CPA fund and it's actually perfect for a project like this, even though it wasn't exactly what it was intended for, is that we can cover the cost of this $6 million project. We think roughly 4.3 will be spent in, in fiscal 19 and I think actually that will shift back a little bit into '20 and then the rest in $850,020 and $850,000 in FY '21. That gives us enough money in the CPA fund, we're not going to run dry, we don't have to borrow money, we can just take the money out of the, the money that's available in the fund for this. And other than, you know, maybe a very short period of time through the end of next year, if, if a very significant land acquisition project came up that was, met a, I think, a broad interest in the town, it might be a little bit tough in that one year, but once we get past one year, I think we'll be in pretty good shape. So I was the one who was most concerned about that and I feel comfortable at this point that there's sufficient money in the fund. We haven't rated the fund to fund this project, it's a prudent approach going forward and we're not borrowing money, so. So I'm super excited about it and I think everybody else is because of the impact of what it's going to have, so.
Any other questions? I think you answered the biggest one about the funding.
Yeah.
You were right on point with that one, so good, thank you.
How much do we take in? I know this is a broad question each year.
Uh, yes, it's about $2 million. It's, it's roughly, we take in about a little less than 1.7 billion under the surcharge and probably what we're going to get back from the state reimbursements, about $300,000. It's, may even go down a little bit from that, but we use the mark of $2 million a year we bring in.
So are we consistent with state law that places minimum expenditures for the 10% first floor presentation?
Yeah, what we do is every year, and you could go, I, I didn't torment you with my spreadsheet that showed every expenditure we've had since the start of the program, but what we've done is, if you saw this year, you know, where we have this reserve for historical expenditures of $200,000, so we've earmarked, that money can't be spent for anything else. That's reserved, that comes out of the total. And then the next year, when we actually have projects, it gets applied against that and we've done that in the past when that's happened. It's happened a couple of times on affordable housing and it's happened a couple of times in historical preservation. So we reserve the money by having a separate line item in the appropriation for that purpose. So and the one other thing I wanted to, to mention is that this Thursday, we, the CPC meeting is, we are having our, our meeting, it's actually a new idea of an annual outreach meeting and we want to bring in as many people as possible. We think at one level, there's knowledge of CPA and the community, but it's probably most well-known among the people go to town meeting and not in general. And so I don't think people in general know all the projects that we've funded and, you know, the impact, you go into the library and a lot, you know, there's no more leaking in the library, but that came because of CPC funding. So that, that's a very good thing, I think. And so I know a number of you'll be able to come. I, I think it's going to be a good meeting, I think it's a chance to learn a lot about what CPA does and, you know, even have some, bring up some ideas of what it could do in the future. I mean, we focused on certain areas to date, but that's not to say the same areas that we should focus on in the future. So new ideas are good. I think a lot of this ties into the master plan, too. It's like the master plan's got some broad ambitions of what we do in the future and a lot of them are quality of life, quality of life related, so, you know, maybe we'll come up with some other good ideas.
Will that also be televised, John?
I believe it will be, I believe it will be, yeah. Let me check with Bill Callahan who's running, but I'm pretty sure it is because we've got bubble protectors and everything and we're, we're doing it at, at Stevens Estate, so it may not be set up for that, but even if we could just record it and make it available.
Right, it probably won't be live, it might be just recorded and replayed, so.
But you, and the CPC voted, in fact, even televised meetings going forward anyway.
Yeah, we said we'd be glad to do it in the future, which, which would mean we'd have to come in here and, you know, but.
You can bounce the group that's in here those Thursday, I promise.
Yeah.
I think that's a great idea. I think, you know, there's always a common misconception about where CPC money comes from and, you know, why are we spending money on this and we should be doing this and people don't understand, you know, how CPC works and what the money can be spent on as opposed to, you know, why aren't you repaving the street or something like that with that?
Right, and it's, yeah, and it's limited what we can do. And I think one of the other things, and this was a suggestion from the- things, and this was a suggestion from the town manager, was that as part of every approved appropriation, we're going to do a grant agreement that provides certain common conditions, and, you know, one of the most significant things is, we want the applicant to report periodically the status of their work. You know, in the case of town projects, it's pretty easy, but in some cases, it's private groups, it's, you know, Ridgewood Cemetery, if you remember, it's the Historical Society, and we went in to report regularly on, on their stewardship of the money, so, and there might be a few other special conditions, you know, and, and a couple cases, we ask for conservation restrictions on property or something like that, and so forth, so we will be doing that for all the projects this year.
Great.
Good, thank you.
Thanks, John. We now have, I would invite the chairman of the planning board, Mr. Goldberg.
Did you shave just for the meeting?
No, I had a mediation today, trying to be good impression.
He's an honest attorney.
All right, so, Aetan Goldberg, chair of the planning board, so we'll go through the planning board articles. Article 11 is adoption of zoning bylaws, so this, I think you guys are familiar with the general code update of the town bylaws, this is simply the planning board's version of that, so same thing that you folks have in front of you. We just wanted to make sure that everything that was being changed was not really of substance, and we got confirmation of that, and that everything will be available for people to view, to see all the changes, so we're comfortable making a favorable recommendation for adoption of zoning bylaws, recodification, article 11. I can tell you from personal experience, having worked with general code, they really do a great job answering questions, and have, at least when I've worked with them, have been very receptive to comments and questions, and even criticism of, you know, why, why are you making that change, why are you suggesting that change, what have you seen other places, so, I think that's a, it's a good, good update. Article 12, acceptance of public way, Great Lake Lane, that started as a citizen petition by Mr. Zerico, this was a subdivision that had already been built, the ways had already been laid out, they've now been the procedures for following, for, for acceptance of ways as public ways has been followed. We weren't sure at the time when it was originally filed whether the conditions that needed to be met through the Conservation Commission were going to be done in time, so that's why the planning board didn't sponsor it originally, and it came as a citizen petition to kind of get it started in the process. Everything that needs to be done to this point has been done, so the planning board was satisfied to recommend that. Basically, when the subdivision was laid out, it was always anticipated that these would be public ways, and everything has been done according to that plan, and so we're satisfied that these are appropriate public ways, and have gone through all the proper paths, including engineering and things like that, and now eventually coming to you folks for, for what you need to do. So, Tom was great in answering all of our questions, so if you have any questions for him specifically on that, he can answer them, I know he's here, but we were supportive of that, especially now that it's gone through all the process. 13, okay, our, article 13 is 127 Marblehead Street, this is at the corner of Marblehead and Middlesex, I'm told it used to be a business called?
The old Franny's?
Franny's, I was not, was not there at the time, but I know I did live across the street for about two years. It is a, up until recently, and until now, is very rundown building, in that neighborhood is completely residential, other than a couple of businesses, you know, on Middlesex, but it's a, really a residential neighborhood, one families, two families, some three families. The plan is to try to make this into a, from the business zone that is now into an R4, which is what everything around it is, and to make it into a multifamily. The owner knows that to do that, he's going to have to go to the ZBA, so the zoning change simply allows it to be residential for a one, for one unit, if he needs more, he's going to have to go to the ZBA, he knows that. I think it'll likely be approved for more, because everything around it is, but the change is to make it go from business to residential, which really frankly fits the neighborhood a lot better than what you could do there right now in business by right, so it's a very good change.
This is something that the, the owner wants, not?
Yes, the owner recommended it, came to us, asked for us to sponsor it, and we were happy to sponsor it, because it really actually fits the neighborhood, a lot of times when you have a citizen petition, it may not fit the neighborhood, this one actually fits perfectly, it just was something that was sponsored, that was originally brought to us by the owner, because he bought it and wanted to make the changes, couldn't do it in a, in the business district that it is now, so we're very happy to support that. All right, our next one, wireless, I don't know if you guys know that there was a cell tower project that was proposed? That was, that was a joke. So, as part of the, what does wire, what our amendment to the zoning bylaw for wireless, it's really just a notification, one of the things that came up amongst many of the things that came up at the, many hearings that occurred for this project, was that some people said they didn't get enough notice. Now, what the requirement is right now is for butters to butters within 300 feet, I believe, yeah, 300 feet of the property line, and cell towers, as far as the planning board was concerned, have a greater impact than 300 feet. It's, you know, i- if you're talking about a tower that's 100 feet high, it's really going to impact people, not just right next door to the property, but a lot further along. We discussed increasing the 300 foot to 1,000 feet, to 700 feet, to requiring, you know, whether it requires certified mail, to doing other things. We felt somewhat restricted by the federal laws that say we can't unreasonably restrict wireless, so we thought a safe legal compromise would be to go to 500 feet, that requires some more of the applicant, gives more people notice, I mean, by the end of the process, everyone really got their say, but just to make sure that, you know, people really get noticed early on in the process, we're recommending changing that to 500 feet, rather than 300, which it is for all other special permits. Questions on that? Yeah, all right. No other changes to that. All right, building heights, article 15 and 16 go together, that is the Senior Center project, which I'm sure you're all aware of. To do this particular project, the zoning needs to be amended to make it B2, and there also needs to be an amendment to the waiver restriction. So, in B2 currently, it says that unless you are five acres, you cannot get a waiver of the building height, which this project would need. We, the planning board was a little concerned about waiving that, because there are other B2 projects that that would, the, the request originally from the town had been to just completely cut out the waiver, make it zero, so if you're a B2 project, you can request this height waiver, which still requires a special permit from the planning board. But, we wanted to, we're supportive, the planning board is supportive of this project, it certainly, seems like there are more safeguards in place than the current project that could go there, that the state has allowed, but we did hear from neighbors who made some really great points about privacy concerns, about traffic concerns, and things that we'll have to address later on, you know, in the site plan process, and special permit process, and the developer in the town really seemed to be willing to answer and work with them, which was great. But, so what we did here is, we're asking to change the five acre requirement to three, that will suit this project, but it'll also limit where else you could ask for a height waiver, because there were some places, other B2s, and we had Mr. Cifori show us all the different B2s in town, and some of whom we really didn't want to allow for a height waiver, so this is limiting while still allowing this project to go forward.
Why didn't you go like eight to 400, why did, what made you choose three?
Three acres?
Three acres.
Um, because it was based, so that this project is, depending on how you measure it, between three and a half and four and a half, depending on which properties and which parcels you're counting, so we wanted to make sure that this project could go forward as proposed, as worked out, and then keep it as limited as possible with that, with that being said. So, this was the, we felt the lowest we could go, while still making sure that we didn't have legal issues or unforeseen consequences to this particular project, that was the basis for the request.
How many acres is it?
It's between, so it depends on which parcel, so there are three different parcels involved in the Senior Center project, and if you count them all, it's about four and a half, but depending on who owns which land later on, it could be as low as three and a half, 3.4, and then there's some wetland delineations that made it challenging, so we wanted to be safe and say three, it's not going to be less than three, but we didn't want to say zero, because that would have impacts on other properties, so we thought this was a good compromise.
So the town, it's going to be transfer of control and ownership of part of those four plus acres, so when you re-subdivide those lots, there's questions about what that total acreage would be for the residential development which this zoning is specific to, and there will be less than four acres when that happens.
We talked about different ways that we could even carve things out, you know, things in the flight path, things in the watershed, but it, it got kind of complicated, and, and, we, we wanted to make it simple, so that we, everyone knows going along, that if we fund the Senior Center project, it's going to be able to be done here, and if we vote, if the town votes for this article and votes for the funding, then this is all set, presumably without legal complications, we wanted to make sure that we didn't get in the way of that, while still trying to make sure that there were unforeseen consequences in other B2 districts, so that's why.
I just be concerned if you start having higher buildings on smaller parcels than what we're used to.
Well, what Aetan identified was, the planning board did spend quite a while on that, and it was a really interesting conversation to sort of witness, but that was raised, Eric Cifori lined out each of the parcels that would be impacted by the change to B2, and then did so by parcel size, and as you stopped to do that, and I think Mr. Simons introduced that one or two of these that were already redeveloped recently, it came down to this, you know, really narrow, I think, three or less parcels impacted by the decision, something like that.
Yeah, it was about two, that when we ultimately got to, it was about two, and we did talk about this.
What helps with combining parcels, reducing any risk at that?
So, I mean, there's always risk about combining, and then chopping off, and things like that, and that's why, you know, we tried to keep it as, as simple as possible, because you, I mean, theoretically, there could be things done to manipulate, but that's why, I mean, it's already at five, we want to go to three, and still, even if you want to get a waiver of the height requirement, you still need a special permit, so it still has to come back to the planning board anyway. The only reason, I think that's only, that it's even being addressed, is because this particular project is under five, otherwise it would have just stayed where it was, at five.
There's some changes around this, I think, on the Fajetta property side as well, the same bylaw was amended, I think, as part of that, under a citizen's petition for the parcel that's currently being proposed, permitted for developing the residential parcel, a couple of years.
Okay, so we got that one. So 15 and 16 both cover that, and then 17 is solar, okay, so article 17, we are, we are very much not done with, we want to do a solar bylaw, but it's complicated, and so, it really comes down to, right now, we have almost, well, there's nothing about solar in our bylaws at all, so you can, unless you require some other permits, so like, we, we permitted a solar project at the Brooks Field, but the only reason that came to the planning board was because it required a land disturbance permit. If it had been smaller, it might not have come to us at all. A project like that, it's in the back, in a field, you can't see it, collecting solar for the school, it's great. Our major concerns are solar projects in residential neighborhoods. Having worked in Beverly, and looked at this in other places, you know, if someone built a, you know, 20 by 20 solar panel on a pole that rotates 10 feet from your property, you might have, you might love solar, but you might hate that particular project. The difficulty is, we want to encourage solar, we want to encourage it responsibly, especially in residential neighborhoods, and trying to figure out setbacks and heights, and what should be allowed by right versus what should be allowed by special permit versus site plan review is difficult. The state has a model, but it's kind of old, every town does something completely different, you know, Haverhill bans it in all industrial, because they want their industrial to be for industry. Planning board seems to think, and at least my sense is, that it would be great to have these in industrial, because it, you know, makes our businesses greener, and it's a great, doesn't really bother anyone, so that we kind of think that as a plus. We think it's great in residential, but of the appropriate scale. So we're working on it, we are hopeful that we'll have something by the time we get to town meeting, we're just not done yet, and we've gotten some good input, and we'd welcome any input to.
Was this for just freestanding? This isn't for like roof mounted, or is it?
It's for everything.
It's for everything?
It's for everything.
If a resident wants to put solar on his rooftop, they, he would be now, or he or she would be covered.
It's covered by the bylaw, but roof mounted, we don't, we don't restrict.
Okay.
So it's covered, it's, it's in here, but it's not restricted. You want to put it on your roof, great, but if you want to put up something on a, versus the ground versus the pole, that's, that's what we're trying to figure out. The idea of carports has been introduced, and what does that count as, should we define that? We're, we're wading through it, the planning department's been great, Gene's been great in trying to find different models, and what other people do, and we're just, we're just still going through it. So, if you guys have questions, and you want to come and talk with us about it, great, but it's, it's a tough one.
It's a lot of work into this, this is pretty comprehensive.
Yeah, and, and it's, and you know, we had a great discussion about it last time, I mean, I will say that the staff on the planning department is great, the board really is thoughtful, and we're having a lot of good discussions, and tries, trying to get it as best we can, so, so we're still working on that one. And I think that might be, let's see if there are any more.
It does represent 20% of the pages in the warrant. So I don't know if it's green, I'm not sure if that's a green article.
I'm reading it on, I'm reading it on, I'm, I'm reading it here.
I don't think this article's very green.
Make it double-sided. Set salaries, I don't think, set salaries, I don't think is us.
No, we'll leave that alone.
Yeah, planning board's not going to take a position on your salary.
It's a good idea.
All right, I think that's it, unless you guys have other questions?
The capital budget.
Yeah, do we have a capital budget recommendation?
Yeah, sure.
So, and I don't know about the CPC, so we were in favor of the CPC budget, I know you heard about that earlier from Mr. Simons. The, from a planning perspective, we think that the fields, that is a great use of the fields, the design looks fantastic, and it will be right in time for my kids to go to kindergarten and middle school, so good work there. And we were also in favor, voted in favor of the capital budget. The capital budget is a little, is a little harder, it's not really a traditional planning board role, so that was a little more difficult, we did have a discussion about what kind of what our role is in that, and definitely going to try to work with town manager for next year to kind of have a little more input ahead of time, or at least discussion ahead of time, and we think that'll actually work out well with the master plan, trying to incorporate some of these long-term capital projects with some of the goals and objectives of the master plan, so that'll flow nicely in the spring, I'm sorry, in the fall, but overall, we were, we got a rundown from town manager of the capital, capital plan, and voted favorably, in favor of that.
Hey, Aetan, I do really appreciate that, because that, you're kind of, you'll be in the spotlight now with, what do we do with the master plan, and how does that come forth, so, the more connectivity and I think transparency that we can work in tandem with, I think, the more mileage we can get out of it, so.
Yeah, I think so far, I mean, the master plan project so far has been fantastic with the, with the consultants and with the public input, I think, and the big ideas, now we're getting to smaller ideas, and once you get to smaller ideas, it's great, but then you need to find dollars for those smaller ideas, so I think tying those to the Board of Selectmen's priorities, the town's priorities, as well as what money we have, and the Finance Committee working those together will be important as we move forward.
Great. So I think that if I can, the planning board, it was a very interesting meeting, I learned a lot about solar, and a lot of other things, I think the meeting went until about 11 o'clock, maybe a little bit beyond, I snuck out just before 11. I do appreciate the fact, I think one of the things we talked about as relates to the capital plan, is there's no specific role for the planning board as relates to the capital improvement plan, but over time, it's had an involvement, and we want to respect that, and so what I proposed was that it's, it's was that it's, it's, over the last several years, seems to be moving closer to when we're under the pressure of producing a warrant. What's pressure on the planning board is they're evaluating some significant land use articles to fit time in to talk about these as well and, and weigh in on the capital improvement article. So what I've proposed is that the time you folks approve it in December, it gets provided not only to the finance committee, but to the planning board at the same time. And that the matter appear before the planning board so they can have one or two meetings if they wanted. It'll all be wrapped up in early February rather than having a conversation about a capital improvement article late in the game. It makes it very difficult for the group with everything else. Now, this year, not sure January would have helped either, but most years, getting them the capital improvement plan that much earlier and really focusing on those things that have planning impact. You know, the six-wheel dump truck in the middle of this plant is probably not one of those, but, or school IT, but the facility master plan may be a good example. So narrowing the focus to the things that are very specific to planning, a planning board involvement, and getting the plan early enough so that they have time to read it and adjust it. And then going to a meeting in January and having voted in February seems to make more sense if we all don't feel under the pressure of sort of getting it done. But I do appreciate the time and effort they made at that meeting to try to get through these articles and the capital improvement plan and get those opinions into this warrant so that the town meeting members really get a very complete warrant. In watching the solar discussion, I recognize that they haven't quite baked yet. It needs some more time. But the rest of it, I really appreciate the effort of the planning board to get through a lot of tough questions and get them ready for you for your decisions tonight.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay. That's it on the items under communication. That's posted on the warrant, on the agenda. I don't know if there's any other communications from either the town manager or any other selectmen regarding.
Tree limbs?
Huh?
Well, you know, it was, it was very cathartic. I went to a meeting of mayors and managers and legislators, and everybody talking around the table was talking about the struggle with trees and tree limbs and what's happening in every community. So I felt a little better, I guess.
You, you came across the most, I think, professional, I mean, I'm biased, being that you're our North Andover manager, but I think at least the way that, you know, it was featured in the newspaper.
Portrayed.
Like we, we were on top of our game. We weren't really complaining. We were tackling the problem. And I think it's pretty visible if you drive down at least our main roads right now.
Yeah. First of all, the residents should know, we, we recognize the impact this winter had on, you know, trees. We recognize the impact it has when they walk on sidewalks and even in their front lawns, and to a certain extent, their back lawns and other spaces. So they should know that we're aware of it. I think it becomes a challenge just to find a reasonable response in a way that we can actually complete the task rather than setting an expectation we can't complete. People should know we've had multiple crews out and private contractors for the last couple of weeks. We may not advertise a lot about that. Really focusing on the main routes of travel, the town trees, the things that bring a life safety risk. Crews have been great. The private contractor we worked with for a couple of years has been phenomenal as well. We opened Seer a little early in our, our working Seer on a six-day-a-week schedule without requiring any kind of permit for a resident for, for the first couple of weeks. And then working with Jim Stanford, who's been fantastic, and his staff have agreed now to put, on the last week in April rolling into May, we'll put more out about this, but with trash day, you'll put out bundles of limbs which can be, let me get these right, six inches in diameter, four feet long, so something I guess, like that. And they have to be bound by twine or something similar. And if you put them out on the day your trash goes out, then we're going to have additional crews that will come in. If it stays there after the trash truck is gone, don't worry, we'll be, we'll be there. And then we'll evaluate that response. But I think it gives an opportunity for folks to know there's a date coming. Because I know for a lot of folks, and I completely appreciate it, the weather's getting slightly nicer and their leaves are starting to focus on their leaves, and they're wondering what we're doing about those limbs. And we are thinking about it, and we continue to try to evaluate and do what we can to, to sort of address those concerns. The simple math is if we put four crews out, getting to 25 homes a day, that'd be pretty aggressive given that some of the branches out there, that'd be 100 homes. In a week, it's 500, and we have nearly 12,000 parcels. So the simple math is we can't get to everybody's home and everybody's bundle in a normal course of work and still do anything else, right? And we have a lot going on in the spring, potholes especially. But we're trying to get to those as best we can tomorrow, obvious ones, and then supplementing with other activities to make sure that we're being as responsive as we can. We ask for patience. We know the folks are pretty good at that. And also recognize in the end if there's a jump call between something that really should be in the backyard and a private contractor picking it up versus us, try to side with the private contractor because we're, you know, we've seen some pretty big bundles out there that look basically like 40-foot trees cut into sort of small lows. And so again, if everybody sort of did that mental math and realized we cannot make it to every parcel, even within, let's say, how long, 10 weeks, 20 weeks, that'd be 22 weeks, right? Half a year to get to everybody's house. We will get to everybody's house if they manage it in a way that we can get that stuff and move on and increase that workload from 25 houses to 50, 60, or 70. So we are working with folks. We appreciate their patience, and you should know we're not, it is how we're spending most of our days lately in terms of focusing on it.
As a, as a citizen and the elected officials, it's a quality of life issue. I'm really glad that we're doing it. You know, thank goodness it doesn't come up all the time. But when it does, that's what people expect of their towns. I think it's great. And the communication seems to have been pretty good. I gave you the update the other day. So, no, I, as you said, as long as there's patience, I think that we all win from this. So, thank you.
I would just share also that I've been in very regular contact with our, with our town manager. And I thank you very much for accepting my calls every, every day regarding the traffic flow around Atkinson as the construction's happening. And appreciate the public's patience as we make sure the contractors follow what we're telling them. But there should be no Mack trucks, pick, you know, pickup truck, dump trucks, or other construction vehicles coming through the Atkinson parking lot during drop-off and pickup. And we will have a police detail there and, and our town engineer, thank you for making sure that's enforced.
It's great to have you there.
So that I don't have to stand between them and the crosswalkers that I've been doing.
It's a safety jacket and a hat, you know?
No, but I'm.
That's a police officer, not a detail, so I don't get any.
Sorry, police officer, thank you. And I just want to recognize the very responsiveness of our town manager to that issue. And residents of that area definitely appreciate it, so.
I don't think we want our kids being picked up by Mack trucks.
No.
Or school buses used to dump soil. So I think we can be able to clarify those lines.
Or hit by fallen branches.
Any more communications? With that, I would under consent items invite our fine chairman, Mr. Jeff Coco, from our festival committee on up. I think that you wanted to watch two hours of our selectmen's meeting tonight in person, so.
He was here early.
You kept, you kept Tom company, which is great.
Hey, we appreciate all you do. You've, you've, you've been under siege with the weather as well, and for you.
We all have. We all have. Once again, I come before you for our 46th Annual Sheep Sharing Festival to be held May 20th, requesting your permission to hold the event on the con on Sunday. And hopefully you'll all consent to have good weather.
It's already being pushed on Facebook, so I hope we approve it. Motion made by Selectmen Smedili.
Second.
Seconded by Selectmen Valencourt. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
Oh, it's a great event.
Thank you as always.
Thirty seconds.
Oh, my, no. Jeez.
Take care.
Thank you, Jeff.
Saw that after, should have taken him before everything.
For this next item, I want to recuse myself as I am in a butter. And by advice of town council, I'm going to recuse myself of the Great Lake. Accept the discussion.
You did, you shot an email, so we'll, we'll try to remember to call you back. I just completely axed out of it. So we have item B. Pressed X instead of enter. And so I know that we do have Mr. Zerico here today. So the board is being asked to accept the street layout of Great Lake Lane. It was touched upon a little bit earlier by the chairman of the planning board. And after the board accepts the layout, town meeting will need to vote to accept the street as a public way. And so we have a report that's been enclosed.
Oops, sorry.
I don't know that, if there's any discussion or any necessary presentation.
It's important that you read the motion, but we recommend that you support this.
I would certainly have to take a motion.
I move that the board of selectmen recommend acceptance of Great Lake Lane as a public way and declare that public necessity and convenience require the F R said way to be laid out and do hereby order and direct that said way be laid out as shown on the plan of land entitled Street Layout Plan of Great Lake Lane located North Andover, Massachusetts. Date 12/18/17. Scale one inch equals 40 feet. Professional engineers and land surveyors, Christiansen and Sergi, Inc., 160 Summer Street, Haverhill, Massachusetts, 01830. And upon acceptance by town meeting to accept deeds to the street and all related restrictions and easements shown on said street layout plan and the plan entitled Definitive Subdivision Plan for the Glade located in North Andover, Mass. Applicant and Record Owner TKZ LLC 78 Great Pond Road, North Andover, Mass. Prepared by CSI Professional Engineers and Land Surveyors, Christiansen and Sergi, Inc., 160 Summer Street, Haverhill, Massachusetts, 01830. Dated 9/15/2014 and last revised 11/11/2014 and recorded as plan number 17212 at the North Essex Registry of Deeds.
Motion made by Selectmen Keen. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Selectmen Smedili. Any discussion?
Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. And I'd like the record, of course, to show that Selectmen Valencourt left the room in recusal and.
And Tom's got to pay a bit.
Have to say something. Thank you. You're welcome. And if you wouldn't mind letting our colleague know, he can come back and.
Everything good?
Next item on the agenda is the appointment of Nathan, although it says Neil, I think.
Nathan.
It says Neil on the agenda, but it is the appointment of Nathan Weinreich to the zoning board of appeals as a full member. And I will defer to the appointment subcommittee.
Move that the board of selectmen appoint Nathan Weinreich as a full member of the zoning board of appeals for a term ending June 30th, 2018.
Second.
Motion made by Selectmen Keen, seconded by Selectmen Nobley. Any discussion?
He's a sitting alternate for about two years, I think, now. So good experience, can step right into it.
So all in favor of that appointment?
Aye.
All opposed. Hearing none. Thank you, Nathan.
Go, Nathan.
Next item on the agenda is a request of surplus vehicles. The request is from the police department.
I think you skipped one, sir.
Did I?
Skip D.
Ratification of the question.
Oh, I literally jumped right over. So the police department cares a little bit more about item D. So ratification, I'm going to go back now. Item D, under consent, ratification of collective bargaining agreements between the town and the police lieutenants for the period of July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2021.
I'll move that the board of selectmen approve the collective bargaining agreement between the town and the police lieutenants for the period July 1, 2018 to June 30th, 2021.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Selectmen Keen, seconded by Selectmen Valencourt. Any discussion?
Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries, and that is approved. Now we go to the request of the police department to surplus a vehicle.
Mr. Chairman, this is the community service officer van. You may have seen it around town. Not the most attractive. We pride ourselves in having a good, solid fleet of vehicles, but this would not probably fit into that. We've gotten all of the useful life we can out of this vehicle, and we'll be replacing it for use by the same staffer moving forward. It'd be replaced.
I remember when Susan Northern was thanking the town for providing that vehicle to our, to our surplus.
Yeah, it's a few years ago.
Yeah.
Good entertainment. Any motion?
Move that the board of selectmen approve the request of Police Chief Charles Gray to surplus vehicle number 321 per his memorandum to the town manager dated April 4th, 2018.
Motion made by Selectmen Keen. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Selectmen Valencourt. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. You've surplused it. Next item on the agenda is our 2018 Annual Town Meeting Warrant. I would actually entertain a motion to open the warrant, 2018 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Move that the board of selectmen open the 2018 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Motion made by Selectmen Nobley.
Second.
Seconded by Selectmen Keen. Any discussion?
We ordered it.
Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, we've cut.
All opposed. Warranty is open. So we now hear a motion to accept the warrant.
So, so you may notice that, just so you know, there's been some, we've moved some articles around. We can certainly explain why. Trying to keep like topics together is a little bit tricky on this year's version, in the sense that the senior center is linked to some zoning articles. The Fields Project is linked to CPC in a separate funding article. And so it's, it's unusual that you'll have two or more articles linked to one discussion. In this particular case, capital article for the senior center, acceptance of land for a senior center, zoning for the senior center. And so we didn't want to put all of those together because that gets a little difficult too. But try to rework the normal divisions of finance and zoning in, in general in a way that at least is a, they're fairly close to another, to one another so that the conversations could proceed in some kind of order at town meeting. So we've, we've moved some of those around to accomplish that.
So that is the acceptance of the warrant. That is where we are on the agenda. And so I.
So I move that we accept the 2018 Town Meeting Warrant.
It's presented.
It's presented. Thank you.
Motion made by Selectmen Valencourt, seconded by Selectmen Smedili. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. We've accepted the warrant. I would now hear a motion to close the warrant.
Move that the board of selectmen close the 2018 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Motion made by Selectmen Nobley to close the warrant.
Second.
Seconded by Selectmen Smedili. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Warrant is closed. Final item under this time. Section of the agenda is, we will be voting whether to take action. Uncertain. Articles. And so, point of information, I mean, is this, I'm going to jog my, my memory. So when it comes to going through the items on the warrant, do we have to vote clearly, right? We have to clearly say whether we're going to take action. We can't just choose not to take action. Or do we?
We can vote favorable action.
Favorable.
On favorable action, report at town meeting or take no action.
Right. But we would vote.
You could take, you could vote to take no actions.
Okay.
I would not recommend you take no action, but you could vote to take no action.
And we can also bundle a few of them. Like, my recommendation is that we would bundle articles, the general articles one through nine. I would move favorable action on the general articles one through nine.
Selectmen Valencourt made a motion to recommend favorable action on articles one through nine. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Selectmen Nobley. Any discussion?
The reason being behind this, just for edification for folks.
The bundling?
Yeah.
Yeah, mostly the general articles are usually kind of cleanup articles, kind of housekeeping articles. So they are all basically ones that I feel that we would vote favorably on anyway because they're recommended by the town manager and his staff and et cetera. So they're housekeeping type articles.
Eight and nine are not necessarily less housekeeping though, because they're transfer of land. I mean, that's kind of.
Okay.
I mean, I'm fine.
No, no, you know, somewhat, you're right, you're right.
But eight and nine are kind of more.
We can back that off then. No, no, you're right. I thought those, I actually, for some reason, I thought those were under the zoning articles. I didn't realize they were there. So you're absolutely right. I think, let me amend my, I'd like to make a friendly amendment to my motion, and that I would recommend favorable action on articles one through seven. And then we can take eight and nine separately. So I would recommend favorable on one through seven.
I will second that.
So the article, the motion on the table is for favorable recommendation for articles one through seven. Motion made by Selectmen Valencourt, seconded by Selectmen Keen. That is considered an amendment. So we are voting to amend your motion, or can you withdraw your motion? Is that a?
Can amend the motion.
Okay, so this is a vote to amend the motion?
Okay, so amend the motion for articles one through seven.
Seven.
Okay.
And eight and nine will be taken separately.
So let me just, for the sake, because we're catching up, I just want to make sure we have the right hard copy packet. Just, one is the report of committee. Two is the report of receipts and expenditures. These are standard annual articles. Three is the authoriz- these are standard annual articles, three is the authorization for the town manager's superintendent regarding contracts in excess of three years, four is the authorization to accept grants of easements, five is the authorization to grant easements, six is the, to amend the general bylaws to add a community preservation committee to the televised boards and meetings article, which was voted by the CPC at a meeting a month or two ago. Seven is the recodification of the town's general bylaws.
Great.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. The Board of Selectmen, let the record show, unanimously recommended favorable action on articles 1 through 7. Article 8.
So Article 8 is the article that authorizes our acceptance of a portion of the three parcels of land that are the land that will eventually, these lands will be put, merged together and then parceled, so that we'll have the land necessary to build the senior center.
So I'll move favorable action on Article 8.
Second.
Selectman Valancourt has a motion, favorable action on Article 8, seconded by Selectman Keen, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, let the record show, the board unanimously recommends favorable action for Article 8. Article 9, transfer of land for recreation complex.
So this is the, the reparcellization of the land that stretches between Main Street and Mass Ave with Chickering and Parker on the other side that currently holds the ECC, Atkinson, future kindergarten, Hay Stadium, and the middle school. And we've developed a plan which creates three parcels from what is many parcels, one parcel clear to the middle school, one parcel clear to the ECC, Atkinson kindergarten, both of which will remain in the care and custody of the school department, and the parcel in the middle for the new recreation complex. This article needs approval from the school committee, and they did approve this article, recommended favorable action as you see in your book, and voted in favor of this new parcel format. This will make clear what Mr. Simons identified needed to make clear, he wasn't, I don't think yet aware that this was going on, that this parcel will be in the care and custody of the Board of Selectmen for recreational purposes, and can be used only for that purpose.
Mr. Chair, I move favorable action on Article 9, transfer of land for recreation complex.
Second.
Motion made by Selectman Smedele, seconded by Selectman Keen to recommend favorable action for Article 9, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none. Motion carries with unanimous favorable recommendation for Article 9. Article 10, and I think it's important for the record, earlier this evening we heard a citizen petition and we identified it, and it's identified on the agenda as Article 10, but that is not what Article 10 in the warrant is going to be, that's going to be Article 22. And so Article 10, as you will see it, and for the sake of this discussion, is an appropriation of the capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2019.
Again, Mr. Chairman, the intent was to move the capital plan closer up to the discussion around the things that are going on like the senior center, and that's why it's out of its more traditional place.
Okay, that's... So...
Does the Board of Selectmen recommend favorable action on Article 10?
Second.
Motion made by Selectman Nobley, seconded by Selectman Smedele to recommend favorable action on Article 10, the capital improvement plan, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Hearing none, let the record show that we recommended favorable action on Article 10 unanimously. Article 11.
Mr. Chair, I move favorable action on the appropriation of the recreation complex.
Motion made by Selectman Smedele for favorable action, seconded by Selectman Valancourt, again, for favorable action for Article 11, that's the appropriation for the recreation complex, any discussion? Mr. Chairman, just a clarifying point, that this is all, not, this is not typically revenue that would be used for, we would be using this revenue typically to hire individuals permanently, and these are...
No.
Basically one-time revenues.
Yeah, one is from a reserve account that could be used for other purposes, but we would, we've historically never recommended those for operating costs, and two of the other sources can only be used for capital projects and not for operating expenses.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Any abstentions? Did you, you said aye?
I did.
Oh, oh, no, I didn't.
Yeah, I did this, I'm sorry. I'm just thinking, can we just turn off the artwork, because it keeps, so behind our head, we've had birds and...
Well, I keep on switching from my own desktop to the, it's on the screen, and I don't think anybody wants...
And now we have modern art.
There you go. I don't think anybody wanted to share my emails while I was flipping screens, so I, but I, it's just, it's now upgraded, I don't see the warrant.
So let the record show, the Board of Selectmen recommended favorable action unanimously for Article 11. Article 12, that's the CPC report that we heard a little bit earlier this evening from Mr. Simons.
Mr. Chair, I move favorable action on the report of the Community Preservation Committee, appropriation from the Community Preservation Fund.
Second.
Motion made by Selectman Smedele, seconded by Selectman Keen, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. The board has recommended favor, unanimous favorable action for Article 12. Article 13, set salaries and compensation of elected officials, no changes here. I would hear a motion.
Move favorable action on Article 13, set salaries and compensation of elected officials.
Second.
Motion made by Selectman Valancourt, seconded by Selectman Nobley, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Board recommends unanimous favorable action on 13. Article 14, the revolving fund spending limits. Aye.
I'll move favorable action, recommend that the Board of Selectmen give favorable action on the revolving fund spending limits.
Motion made by Selectman Keen for favorable action.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Selectman Valancourt, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, we recommend favorable action. Article 15, the general fund appropriation for fiscal year 2019.
Move for favorable action for general fund fiscal year 2019.
Motion made by Selectman Nobley.
Second.
Seconded by Selectman Keen, any discussion?
This is the big one, this is the big one.
Yeah, this is the big one.
This, this is the big one that we have discussed at length at meetings leading up to tonight, we're not simply breezing through.
No, it's nice to get this one down.
This is something that we have put, and I should say, especially the administrative staff, quite a bit of work into this, so... Do I hear a motion, or did I miss that? I just want, motion made, seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none. The next three could be taken as a group if the board of the motion was so made. So the next three are Articles 16, 17, and 18, they're the enterprise funds for the water, sewer, and Stevens Estate.
Mr. Chair, I will move favorable action on Articles 16, 17, and 18, appropriations for the enterprise funds for the three entities that you just listed.
Motion made by Selectman Valancourt.
Second.
Seconded by Selectman Keen, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Hearing none, the board recommends unanimous favorable action on 16, 17, and 18. Article 19, transfer to our stabilization fund, we are, the town is seeking to transfer $77,656 from free cash to the stabilization fund.
Mr. Chair, I'll move favorable action on Article 19, transfer to stabilization.
Motion made by Selectman Valancourt.
Second.
Seconded by Selectman Smedele, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Recommend unanimous favorable action on Article 19. Article 20, transfer funds from the Health Insurance Trust Fund to other post-employment benefits.
Move for favorable action.
Second.
Motion made by Selectman Nobley, seconded by Selectman Smedele, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Hearing none, unanimous favorable action. Article 21, transfer.
Mr. Chair, I move favorable action on transfer of funds from other post-employment benefits, known as OPEB, stabilization fund, on other post-employment benefits, OPEB Liability Trust Fund.
Motion made by Selectman Smedele.
Second.
Seconded by Selectman Nobley, any discussion?
So this will close up the stabilization fund, which was originally created several years ago as our first sort of entree into this, and if this and the previous article are approved by town meeting, we'll have more than $2.2 million in the OPEB trust.
I'm getting that in progress.
So all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, we recommend unanimous favorable action. Article 22, this is the citizen petition regarding traffic calming measures in the vicinity of Mass Ave and Route 125, we heard from that citizen a little bit earlier this evening.
Mr. Chair, I'll move unfavorable action based on the issues that we heard with that, well, let me just move unfavorable action.
I'll second.
Motion made by Selectman Valancourt, seconded by Selectman Keen, any discussion?
I think that the citizens have the right idea and interest in trying to maximize safety of this intersection, but I think that these ideas that are put forth are ones that are not feasible based on the discussion we heard earlier tonight from STOT, who are the experts frankly in this, and, you know, that would create additional issues. Legally, we can't do the school zone one, the raised crosswalk, I think would be an issue with turning from Adams Ave, I think as would the stop sign, so I think that the objective was to improve safety, and I think the plan we have is going to improve safety, and I don't think that this is appropriate. I'm sorry.
I agree. Further discussion? I agree, I think that the message I'd want to send to the community is that I don't think that an unfavorable vote would be a reflection of not taking that intersection seriously.
Right.
And I think it's worth emphasizing that, that those aren't actually words, I think most of the time, I'm the only person in the room that actually has a six-year-old that uses that crosswalk every single day.
Right, and I think that's important, I mean, we've got two members of the board that use that intersection, or directly impact it, because they're neighbors.
With children, in total.
In the sense, impact in the sense that we are incredibly sensitive to the, the needs of keeping those kids safe, because we see it every day, and...
I would say without kids in tow, as it relates to that, it's because of this board that you have aligned crosswalks, handicap ramps, sidewalks on that entire stretch of Mass Ave, and a signal when there wasn't one. The plan was about an intersection, and in the end, between that and all the other pedestrian assets, in terms of sidewalks, three, you know, thousands of linear feet of sidewalks and other pedestrian improvements, it's really because the board didn't greenlight, I guess, did not approve the project, not, you had approved the project, didn't let the project stand on its own merits, weighed in, and because of the board's actions, you've added pedestrian improvements specifically to the Atkinson entrance that just were not in the pipeline to get done. So you've done more than just sort of review what they've done, you've influenced an outcome to achieve a result that otherwise wouldn't be there.
And a lot of it's because of the issues being brought by residents, including those folks that filed this petition, I, I wish that we could deliver everything that they need, and I know that they wish that we could.
But I think we did take a lot of what they did say into consideration, this is just the end piece, and, and you could hear what she was saying clearly in it, it's just that after listening to the experts, it just didn't all fit together. But because of that group, I think we also have a better project.
And I think the engineers on the, on the project also took that input seriously and went back and redesigned their project to, to match some of that input, so I think, I think as the town manager said, the outcome has been, the whole project has been improved by the input from the community, and I think that's what we see happen all the time.
And they work hard.
Is there any way, the work that's been, that had been done, how is, is that, can that be conveyed in any way at town meeting? Just set the table around this a little bit.
Well, you, again, in terms of presentation of article, depends what you mean by the form. I think what we, what I'd recommend instead is that the memo that you have in your package and the presentation be made available on the town's website and let people know it, it's out there, so if you have an opportunity to want to look at that, it gives you some advance notice and understanding of what's going on here, I think, rather than trying to, one of the difficulties is an article like this is really kind of put your head around it if you haven't been involved. You folks, all five of you attended a public hearing, which quite frankly, sounds easy, but isn't always the case, they looked around the room, so all of you there, but for the 40 or so folks that were there, it's easier than for other folks who are trying to pick this up as they walk in, so we'll make that available, I think that's a little more of a challenge in terms of handouts, because the hand doesn't give the context, but if we give that kind of information out in advance, folks who have an interest in learning more, we'll have the, the information to learn.
Because I think the problem, you know, Regina, you want people to understand what you guys are talking about, and just sort of saying no to this, it's like, like, why?
People have to make that case at town meeting as well.
Yeah.
Selectman Valancourt's motion's on the table, it's been seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of recommending unfavorable action on Article 22, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Say nay.
Okay.
Any abstentions? Hearing none, let the record show, the board unanimously recommends unfavorable action on Article 22. Article 23, building heights, as presented earlier this evening by the chairman of the planning board.
Any interest to go 23 through 28?
I was going to say, I think that we could, if, I would entertain a motion to take all of what the planning board has presented this evening, and...
The only one being left off, Mr. Chairman, would be 29, because the board is still trying, deliberating over the solar, so that they have made their own recommendation, so it'd be 23 through 28.
Actually, but on this one, I'd like to study it a little bit more, so it's certainly on the building height.
If you could so, say that you would, I would entertain a motion to delay until town meeting, if you prefer.
Thank you, we'll accept that and make that as a motion.
The building height being the one associated also with the change of the parcel, the zoning?
Yeah, and it's all tied together.
Both those are tied up.
You got, I, I just think we have to, it's all connected.
It's up to you, I, I just would like to kind of just see what, I was going to ask you about it in more detail, but...
Do I, I have to ask the planning, I happen to sit in that meeting, but I, I don't have the, again, there was a deliberation over...
When's our next meeting, do we have time between our next meeting and town meeting to make this recommendation?
Not on the warrant.
On the warrant?
Nope.
I mean, I think that we're all there anyways, so, so I guess, Selectman Smedele made a motion.
I just want to see what, what parcels it might affect, and how many and so forth and so on, I just want to study it.
I thought he said it affected two.
Well, do, do we want to hear a second, so we can, we could discuss?
He, I think he said two to three, but I don't know which ones he was referring to, I just like to see what...
Yeah, the one was the, and I'll try to do the best I can, one was the parcel that has now been developed at the corner of Shapness Pond Road and 114.
Okay.
So the belief of the planning board, and the planning board has spent a significant amount of time on this topic.
I'm sure they have.
They went from, I think, approximately 10 parcels that would be in the zone, and started to figure out how modifying this zone would affect other parcels. One was the corner, and the belief is that that's been fully developed, and they've just spent a significant amount of money, and that would have impacted. There was the parcel where the, where they built what I refer to as a barn that backs up to, like a chickwick, on, on Chickering Road, so fairly new development down from Ad Maggie's, they put a barn-type structure attached to it.
Okay, it's already there.
It's already there and has been recently developed, and therefore the expectation is they're not going to take the zoning and turn, take down their multimillion dollar investment and put something back and sort of place it.
Or make it non-conforming.
Or make it non-conforming, and there was one other parcel, I'm drawing a little bit of a blank on that was similar, all of which the planning board, it was a pretty significant deliberation that went back and forth, they all agreed relative to the question of height, that the, the impact of making this change, it did not have a broad impact throughout the community, you know, they, they wrestled over their acreage, four would have been slightly better, but they couldn't fit it in with whatever gets changed in terms of land, and therefore then constrained, and then made sure that the parcel layout was those three, I may be missing one, I may not be, actually, that may be the three, but I'm going off the top of my head from sitting in that meeting and listening. And so that's how they viewed it, I think, to a certain extent, quite frankly, also, you know, in the context of everything else, and people may not want to hear it, but if it's not this development, it'll be another development. you know, in the context of everything else, and people may not want to hear it, but if it's not this development, it'll be another development. The capital article is being taken in advance, because if the senior center, for instance, isn't approved, for in terms of funding through the capital plan, then this zoning may or may not be relevant anymore. But if it's not the senior center with a residential development, it's going to be a more dense residential development that won't need to comply with the height limits currently in the zone. And it will be a taller building anyway. Probably even taller than what's proposed.
The only reason is not, is, I said, not knowing where they are. Nothing could be more disturbing to a neighborhood than all of a sudden a taller building, because there was a parcel that we all can't think of that's-
Well, I can tell you, it, it, the planning board first took it up, I believe, in January or February, and has discussed it at multiple meetings, including having literally the chart of the properties, and starting to eliminate those properties based upon acreage. And it was the unanimous, unanimous vote of the planning board that that question, which was raised, was satisfactorily addressed. And I'm not, again, the board can do whatever research it wants, and in the end, the planning board has voted favorable action, so it becomes a question of whether or not you, in a way, you agree with the planning board's sort of line in the sand. I don't know, it's not quite that way, don't mean personally.
Why don't I say that I'll do this? I will support this, but if something comes up, then I can withdraw my support at town meeting.
Well, I mean, do we want to just hold off until?
No, I, I do, I understand the importance of it being in there, and I think-
We also got to hold off until at least once someone can say what's the board's position.
Yeah, so we can speak.
I'd probably not do that around the senior center.
I just, yeah, I, thank you for trying to assist, but I think that I can make that favorable recommendation. If I find it something different, then I will speak at town meetings. But I do think it is important that it goes in there. I was just letting you know that I might not, might not be unanimous vote, but I'm fine with that. I'm pretty satisfied with what the town manager has told me.
So did you just make that motion favorable?
No, you did.
Well, there was a motion, was there a motion? Did you count your motion?
Oh, yes, that's right.
So do you withdraw your motion?
I will withdraw that.
Selectman Smedili withdrew her motion. Do I hear a motion for favorable action on?
So moved. Twenty-three.
Motion made by Selectman Valancourt for favorable action for Article twenty-three.
Second.
Seconded by Selectman Keen. Any discussion?
Other than it was just being safe, not to be an obstructionist to this process, but just to make sure that there's some hidden parcel that's not going to-
I'll provide you, I'll provide the board a list of the parcels.
That would be great. Okay.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of favorable action. Aye. All opposed. The board recommends unanimously favorable action, and that the town manager will send along a list of parcels that would be impacted by this, or a complete list of any potential impacted parcels.
So can we now move favorable action for Articles twenty-four through twenty-eight? And kind of package those together? I would, I, I'll make that motion. I will make the motion to move favorable action on twenty-four through twenty-eight.
I'll second that.
Selectman Valancourt motions favorable action on Articles twenty-four through twenty-eight, seconded by Selectman Keen. Any discussion? I'm just going to say I'm excited that we're moving forward with the Ferrante's building and doing anything we can to get that boarded-up building back to productive use, so.
I agree with that. I'm also very happy to see this wireless notice, because I know that a lot of residents really wanted that, so I am, I appreciate seeing that.
So, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Hearing none. The board recommends unanimously favorable action on Articles twenty-four through twenty-eight. Article twenty-nine, zoning bylaw regarding solar.
Mr. Chair, I will move that we make our recommendation at town meeting for Article twenty-nine.
Second that.
Motion made by Selectman Valancourt, seconded by Selectman Keen to make our recommendation at town meeting. All in favor, or any discussion, excuse me? All in.
I appreciate the hard work the planning board's doing on that. I think that's very much necessary, and I'm excited to see it, but obviously, since they're not done.
Right, we can't run on something that's not done.
So, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Hearing none. We will make our recommendation on Article twenty-nine at town meeting. I would now say that that is the end of consent, excuse me, yes, the end of consent items regarding any recommendations for our 2018 town meeting. I would now entertain a motion to move into licensing.
Motion move into licensing?
Second.
Motion made by Selectman Nobley, and seconded by Selectman Smedili to move into licensing. All in favor? Aye.
Okay, we're now on licensing. We have just one request tonight for multiple one-day wine and malt licenses from Merrimack College, one of them being on April eleventh from 5:30 to 9:30 for a honors society induction at Casher Hall. A second one for the hockey banquet at the Lala Rink on Friday, April twentieth, 2018, from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. And then a third one for honors senior reception at the Rogers Center on Monday, April twenty-third, 2018, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Again, these are all malt, malt and wine licenses, one day.
Mr. Chair, I move favorable action.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, a motion to move out of licensing?
Motion to move out of licensing?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Our licensing, we are under old business, which we have none, new business, we have none. Any public comment? Joey? Ask the manager, or I should say, the town manager report, so...
Yep, it told us about trees.
It's all about trees. It's about trees all the time.
And thank you for that. And Jim Stanford did send out that email today, so that was extra help.
We'll continue to communicate, and whatever feedback you have, we'll continue to listen and respond as best we can.
Final item, next meeting date is scheduled for April thirtieth. That's not a meeting date that conflicts with anybody's schedule, correct? There were some discussions earlier, so April thirtieth, 2018, 7:00 p.m. in this room, and otherwise, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Selectman Nobley, seconded by Selectman Smedili. All in favor? Aye. You are adjourned.